This, the regular board meeting of the Board of Education for the San Francisco Unified School District for March seventh, two thousand twenty-three is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Lam?
Here.
Commissioner Matamady?
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
Vice President Wesmore?
Here.
President Bogus?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There will be a total of five minutes for speakers. Are there any speakers for public comment?
Thank you. None in person?
If there are any virtual speakers, please raise your hand. Seeing no virtual, uh, public, seeing no virtual speakers.
Thank you. I now recess this meeting at five oh five.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here, H T T P S colon backslash backslash W W W dot streamtext dot net backslash player question mark event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comments to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide public comment, the Zoom host will provoke promote the attendee to panelist and enable the attendees' video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number after dialing, please introduce a P number.
Translation, go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak, but I apparently nobody can listen to me. Is the ASL interpreter listening to me? Hear me? Okay. Okay, so let me see what's happening. Alicia?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Good evening. Good evening, this is Kirk, one of the sign language interpreters. The Spanish interpreter is asking.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Background noise. Also, could you please make Kirk Hamlin, the sign language interpreter, one of the co-hosts?
I did.
And to clarify that the Spanish interpreter can be heard at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Translation.
Yes, thank you.
Can we please have the spread in Spanish and Chinese?
Of course. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si desea interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres uno nueve, tres ocho dos, nueve seis siete seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave, seis seis cinco, nueve nueve seis, nueve siete seis, seguido de la tecla número. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Gua, man shang hao, wo de zhang wei wei gman de hui li tei gong ah mian fei ye zhong wen chuan yue guo mou ge. Ye guan ni ya xue you de hua le, hoi yi da yin gong mo ge sa mi ni ye di hua hou ma. Hai yat sei ba sei, baan sei sam sam yi ba. Ye tong ji haoshu yat ma ma, chut yi yat, lu ling gao, ba gao mung, jiang, ngai, thank you.
Evening, this is Kirk Hamlin, the sign language interpreter.
Services for this evening.
This is Kirk Hamlin, the sign language interpreter. You please make me a co-host this evening. Thank you.
Sorry for the delay. We are going to reconvene to open session. We'll ask folks in the audience if you could quiet down or take your conversations out. We will start with our closed session readout. I move ma, I move approval of the expulsion agreement of one middle school student. Matter number two zero two two dash two zero two three, number seventeen from the district for one calendar year from the date of the board vote to expel. Can I have a second?
I will second that.
Can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wesmore?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Uh, for our next item, I move approval of the expulsion agreement of one high school student. Matter number two zero two two dash two zero two three, number eighteen from the district for the remainder of the spring twenty twenty-three semester and the fall twenty twenty-three semester. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Steele?
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Upstain.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wesmore?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. And here's the rest of the readout from our closed session. In ma, in the two matters of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven yeses gives direction to the general counsel. In the matter of student Gigi versus SFUSD, case number two zero two zero zero six zero four five six, the board by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority to the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of Jones versus SFUSD, the board by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of J A versus SFUSD, the board by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And that is the end of the closed session readout. And we will move on to item D. Our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramata Shaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramata Shaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territories. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramata community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first people. Next, we will go to approval of board minutes for the regular meeting of February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Right. Are there any corrections or changes that folks want to make to the minutes or notate? Scene nine, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. Student delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student delegate Knostra?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President Wesmore?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to our next item. And I think at this point, I'd like to make some notices to some changes that we're gonna have in the agenda for folks. Want to let folks know that today we're gonna plan to post public comment at seven P M versus where it's scheduled at in the agenda, so we're gonna move it up. We're gonna put an initial time limit of forty-five minutes on public comment. And we'll assess at that time how we'll move forward. We'll also be moving up additional items. We'll be moving up item. We moving up the action items to come after public comment. And so also, I think just noting that for folks as well as we proceed. And so with that, we will continue with our superintendent's report. Superintendent Wayne, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogus. Good evening, everyone. I want to start.
That's the end.
You can go back to the title slide. Yeah. Um, uh, good evening again. Want to start tonight, as I've shared, since declaring the payroll state of emergency, I want to provide updates at every regularly scheduled board meeting about our progress. We just had a regularly scheduled board meeting and I shared some data. And so around both our progress in terms of closing tickets, but as well as reducing overpayments and some issues like that, I also shared how we still are, you know, not meeting the expectations around what a functioning payroll system is and identify some milestones to get to on that, on that path. Tonight, I do want to provide an update on an issue that is frankly unacceptable and incredibly disappointing and related to our tax filings. And so we know in terms of our responsibility about filing information with the state, we learned that there was an error that it can potentially be impacting our employees. We are taking it very seriously and working urgently to rectify the issue. We've sent out a communication about this. Our staff understands the issue and we're filing the, the report that's necessary to make sure that our employees can do their taxes and go through that process and have confidence that it's accurate. But just the fact that we, you know, that there is any errors that our employees need to deal with, deal with after what's already been a challenging, a stressful year is something that is, you know, disappointing, think to all involved and for me, who feels a great responsibility to lead this district and make sure our employees can focus on what counts, which is our goals for student learning, that they can't, that when this distraction comes up, it's not what we want our employees spending, spending their time. So again, this is an, an issue where we need to file appropriate information with the Employment Development Department. And we learned that not all the information was filed, so that's what we're working to, to provide. And we, again, are, want to communicate to our employees that we are working to address this. We're aware of this problem and we'll be communicating next steps very shortly. And so, you know, again, I've, I've shared, you know, steps forward at times, but this is definitely a step backwards in how we're working to support our staff through our payroll systems and our other business operations. If you go to the next slide. It is Women's History Month and around the world, millions of people celebrate Women's History Month in March. We continue to celebrate and uplift women and gender diversity by ensuring that our students learn about and celebrate women and by striving to have inclusive school communities. For instance, Ball Empower Her is a group of young women at Balboa High School who stand up for themselves and others. They promote conversations about women's health and rights in their communities. To celebrate Women's History Month this year, members are creating a poster campaign promoting healthy relationships with friends, families, partners, and self. So that'll be neat to check out at Balboa High School. Just want to share some other highlights. You know, we have a goal around college and career readiness and we have some students at Washington High School who are getting ready for a career and already making a name for themselves for having started their own investment club. This was featured on K T V U Channel Two and math teacher Lawrence Hack is the club sponsor. And he talks about how these students have done an amazing job these last three years in growing the club and educating each other through the power of investing. So you could watch the full story by following that link there and just do a, a search around San Francisco High School, High Schoolers Create Investment Club. So great examples of our, of our students taking initiative to support their school and support their future. It is School Social Worker Week, School Social Work Week and a National School Social Work Week is celebrated this year from March fifth to the eleventh. This year's theme is We Rise and School Social Workers Rise Up. And the work that they do, supporting their students, families, and school communities is truly amazing. They're trained mental health professionals who focus on coordinating efforts of schools, families, and community towards helping students improve their academic achievement. At, in our district's school social workers support the creation of student leadership opportunities to build a strong sense of belonging. And this fosters the kind of safe and supportive school environment for our students and lets them practice and gain leadership skills. And then they also support different activities like our Pride Club, Student Council, our peer mentoring. So I got to visit Guadalupe Elementary last week and got to get, was, had an opportunity to get to know the school and meet the social worker and just hear really how she and the staff there, wrap their arms around the students to make sure their needs are, are being met and so they, and they feel safe and supported. So please join me in celebrating and thanking school social workers this week and every week for all they do. And then lastly, want to end with an opportunity. We have students are looking forward to, it's gonna be here sooner than we can believe, our graduations. And so we are putting out the twenty twenty-three Superintendent's Twenty First Century Awards, now accepting applications. Six seniors will receive a two thousand dollar scholarship. So the applications are due March seventeenth. Go to our website to learn how to apply and I'm looking forward to granting some of our amazing students a scholarship for, to support their future educational endeavors. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Superintendent. I also wanted to make note of the fact that we do not have the support of S F Gov TV staff today to do the video. So folks who are watching will only have the view of the collective board and not individual views of the commissioner. Something that we will hopefully work to resolve is we, we go to future meetings and work with our partners to address. So sorry for the inconvenience and hopefully we can do a good job of acknowledging who we are as we speak to help folks who can't see us clearly know who's talking and speaking. And with that, we'll go to our next item, which is the student delegates reports.
Thank you. The Student Advisory Council has begun preparing for our annual youth summit coming up April twenty-eighth. We are expecting to feature a variety of workshops and presentations on current topics that impact students today. We hope to see you there.
Since the end of the year is getting closer, we want to publicize the opportunity for students who are interested in applying to the Student Advisory Council. If you are considering applying, we highly recommend that you attend one of our full council meetings here at five 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 Franklin so that you can get an idea of how we operate and what we do. Our next full council meeting is next Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, from six to eight P M and food is provided.
Furthermore, we encourage anyone who is considering running for student delegate to attend our SAC meetings as well. And you can feel free to reach out with questions by contact, contacting us on Instagram at S F U S D S A C. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, student delegates. And with that, we will go to item number seven, our rave awards, recognizing all valuable employees. I'll pass it to the superintendent.
Thank you again. So this is a proud and also a little bit of a bittersweet rave award. Tonight, we are celebrating Ms. Cheryl DeSanti, the executive assistant to the superintendent, who is also going to be retiring at the end of this month. After thirty-nine years in the San Francisco Unified School District, yeah, let's give her a round of a a, a pause. So, and you, if you've seen Cheryl and you'll see her shortly, she'll be on here, you know, she, to be here thirty-nine years, she must have started early. And she did, right out of high school, she started in San Francisco Unified, working at the Food Services Department as a clerk to review and approve paper lunch applications before the process was automated. She later helped maintain a colossal paper-filled binder, ordering food items and paper kitchen supplies to keep our cooked, cooking kitchens well-stocked and ready for hungry students. So then she eventually advanced to work as a clerk typist, reviewing and processing bids while interacting with vendors, learning many new skills along the way. So then she joined one of our school sites. She was at El Dorado Elementary School as a senior clerk typist and also a parent at El Dorado Elementary School. So I know she was well-loved by the school community and her son was there. Maybe he didn't love having his mom in the office, but no, I'm sure he, he did. And, and as she shares, this was where I truly, I was truly schooled and learned just what it takes to make my contributions towards education of our precious students. I cherish those years with the students and the countless staff who taught me so much about life, both personally and professionally. And they started, she started her beautiful family during those years. And Joseph and her daughter Katie were frequent celebrity visitors to the school and participated in nearly every holiday festivity. She wore many hats in her twelve years of service at El Dorado Elementary School. Then she moved to the central office, providing administrative support to the elementary support division and operations team. She has been a pillar in the central office community ever since, throughout many seasons of change. And I started in the district in two thousand ten in the elementary division. At that time, she was working at middle school, but I always remember Cheryl being really kind and helpful and you could go to and she'd just have the answer immediately. And if she didn't, she'd get it in a moment's notice to support you. Then she moved to the superintendent's office in two thousand twelve and has been instrumental supporting, sustaining superintendents so that they can lead the district to advance our, our mission. And I know when I came back then as superintendent and learned that it was Cheryl in the superintendent's office, I knew I was going to be in very good hands to support a transition to this position. And that has proven true in my first seven months here. And I know the superintendents who've worked many more years with her beforehand have appreciated her guidance and, and support and her leadership in the superintendent's office. And so I want to wish Ms. DeSanti what is hopefully a leisurely and fruitful retirement. And we want everybody to join us in celebrating her dedication and commitment to S F U S D students, families, and staff through this commendation. So I believe we have Ms. DeSanti here, who can say a few words and might have some comments as well.
Wow, thank you, Dr. Wayne. Good evening, Board Commissioners and Superintendent Wayne. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. This rave award is a very unexpected and special surprise for me. I've spent my entire career as a proud civil servant and receiving this acknowledgement and award is like the icing on the cake for me. I'm grateful to be a part of S F U S D and I truly appreciate being honored as a rave award recipient. I will cherish this award and proudly display it in my home. Thank you to everyone who made this possible. Your kindness will always be remembered.
And we can open it to any commissioners who, if they want to share a thought, or if we have anybody else who wants to, to speak.
Yeah, I'll offer up some words. Actually, yeah, I'll offer up some words. I, I guess I would just say, on behalf of the board, just a lot of appreciation for you and the role that we've had. Really appreciated my opportunities to work with you and really valued the, what you offered and provided to the district over the years. And thank you so much for your service and for all that you've done for us. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, Ms. DeSanti, just on behalf, our, most of our interactions happened when I was a member of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education and just the access that you provided to families, to the superintendent, your assistance in scheduling and just, you know, it, it just feels good as a community organization when the head honcho, when the superintendent shows up at your event. And so everything you did to help make us feel important and included because you, you helped, you helped us with access to the superintendent's office and the superintendent themselves. So just thank you for everything you've done to engage with families.
Is it okay if I say something?
Please, yeah.
Sure, sure. You know, I, I just kind of want to speak on, not on behalf of the, of the employees here, but I know how, how I felt. I just want to say thank you to Cheryl. I feel like she's been like the backbone of this district ever since, you know, I've been in central office for the last like eleven years. Known her forever. I mean, her institutional knowledge was, is irreplaceable. And she's been one of the most kind and professional people I've worked with. And I know everybody here is gonna miss her and we're really sad to see her go, but wishing her the best on her retirement. And as you said, to have a very, to have a nice time. But thank you, Cheryl, and we really appreciate you.
Vice President Wesmore?
Yes, ditto to what everyone else has said. And I think that one of the, the moments where I realized just the heart and the grace and the, the smarts that Cheryl had is anytime there's a tech issue, you know someone's core. If they lose their mind, if they're able to hold it together, stay calm, still say kind to everyone. And there, I think one of my earlier meetings, maybe it was a, a committee meeting, we had some major tech issues and she just handled it like a pro and never lost her cool, which I think a lot of us start to lose our cool when we're stressed. And so the fact that under stress, she still remains as kind as ever is a real, it says a lot about who she is as a, as a human being and we're gonna miss you very much.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I think we also were going to take a comment from our former superintendent, Vincent Matthews, if we could unmute him.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Dr. Matthews. You, you do sound a little bit far away.
Okay, I'm right at the microphone. I just wanted to say briefly, Cheryl, Tina Turner has a song, Simply the Best. That's absolutely what you have been. I've had the opportunity to work with in four districts with four executive assistants and you have just been absolutely amazing. You have been the best. A lot of people, they, I did birthday cards and I would do certain things around the office, like Halloween parties. And a lot of people thought, well, that's me being a human superintendent, but it's actually Cheryl who actually humanized the, the superintendent's role. She does everything with grace, style, and class. I am happy for you as you're entering retirement. It is, it is, it's very good on this side, as you will soon learn. But at the same time, I want to say I'm, I'm sad for the district because we are losing, as a district, losing a treasure. But you deserve. Um, but you deserve a a break, you deserve a rest. But just to know, uh, you have done so much for kids and families for thirty-nine years, and I am just blessed uh, that my final five years as superintendent, uh, you were there by my side. Thank you for being my partner. I appreciate you, love you. And uh, I'll, I doubt, I doubt, we'll definitely have some drinks on Tuesday nights as we uh, think about these board meetings. Good to see you all.
Uh, and and with that, are there any cards for public comment on this matter?
There are none in person.
Are there any virtual hands raised for public?
There are three hands raised.
Okay, if we could have a minute each for those hands, and then after those three, we'll uh, move to our next agenda item, which will be public comment.
Uh, guest Islam, this is to um, this is still on the rave award. You'll have one minute.
I apologize, I am um, I was raising my hand for something else.
No worries. Thank you. Vanessa?
Thank you. Um, it's just, it is a bitter sweet moment to your point, uh, Dr. Wayne. Cheryl, um, you've been so kind to me personally since I've been back in San Francisco, leading parents of public schools of San Francisco, and I'm I'm just indebted to all of the work that you've done. Um, Vince is right, you know, you you are just you're a diamond in the rough, and I want you to know from a educator and a parent, and on behalf of our organization, we wish you well. Please keep in touch, and you're going to see some flowers on your desk from us tomorrow. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Marisha?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Um, Cheryl, we're gonna miss you. Um, thank you for all of the things you've done to support. I first met you as a a parent volunteer and um, little people running around here, Zuri first, and then Zaire in my belly. And um, I um, thank you for all of the work that you do behind the scenes that many don't see, but also the things that you do in front of all of us. And I'm a deep appreciation to you as my new role and the A PAC program manager and being on the Ali team and seeing all of the way that you make the things move here on the third floor. Um, we're really, really gonna miss you, and I want to sit next to you and soak up all of your knowledge so that we have some things to sustain us. Um, but congratulations, and I hope you enjoy, and you get to see lots and lots of turtles.
Thank you. That concludes our virtual public comment.
Thank you so much. Uh, and with that, we will move forward in our agenda. I just want to notate that we did shift some items from their um original order in the agenda. So just to clarify with folks, next, we're going to be doing item G G, which is public comment on non-agenda items. So it's really reserved only for people who would like to comment on things that won't be discussed before the board today. Uh, and then we will actually go to item K, which will be our action items. Uh, and then we will actually go to item E, which is our public hearing, just to um, document that for folks, how we're going to move forward. Uh, and with that, we will begin public comment. Uh, we will allocate up to forty-five minutes for public comment. Uh, folks should have speaker cards and already, if you want to speak during public comment. Uh, I think we also would, I'd also request before we start public comment here, if we could do a call for our public commenters virtually and have them put their hands up, so we have a full extent of how long uh, we need for public comment, how many public commenters we have.
Okay, if you would like to give your comment on non-agenda items, so any item that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Um, if you can raise your hand for virtual participants um, for non-agenda items.
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano para hacer un comentario público. Le recordamos que los comentarios públicos son para aquellas cosas que no están agendadas. Gracias.
I'm going to proceed with the in-person public comment. We do have three speaker cards, so when I call your name, please um, go ahead and line up on the podium. Um, Supriya Ray, Jeff Lucas, uh, Michael Essien. Uh, one minute each, President Bogus.
We're gonna do uh, one minute each for all of our public commenters, and we're gonna ask staff if you can um, turn off folks' mics if they do go over a one minute.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking my comment. And first, I want to thank you, Commissioner Bogus, for moving up general public comments so that it can be accessible to more people. I hope this will continue to occur in the future, and if it's held at a regular time early, that could hopefully help more individuals come up to express what they would like to say. Uh, second thing I wanted to ask about is Vision twenty twenty-five. I haven't heard anything about this for a really long time. I don't know if the vision values, goals, and guardrails has completely supplanted Vision twenty twenty-five or not. Um, but I would like to hear about what the status is of that, and if the district is still supporting that. There was a lot of important content in there, including trying to make education more responsive for students in the twenty-first century and seeing the classroom as going beyond the four walls. We have a lot of work to do in that area. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Lucas. Student outcomes don't change until, I know you guys know the rest of that. We're spending too much time focused on the district's business and not enough time focused on the students. Uh, tonight's agenda is full of district business, and it doesn't even include uh, an important item, the second interim report, which is due to the state next week. In fact, we have to have a special meeting next week just for that uh, agenda item. I don't know why the second interim requires a s- special meeting. It will not be easy to cut items from the agenda, but that is what the board needs to figure out in order to increase the focus on the board's goals and student outcomes. Thank you.
Evening, uh, President Kevin Bogus, student representatives, commissioners, and Superintendent Dr. Wayne. I'm Michael Essien, President of U A S F. I'd like to begin my remarks by acknowledging the work the board is engaging in to produce accountability. And I would like to thank the superintendent for his focus on improving the culture of S F U S D. We in U A S F appreciate the increased communication and inclusion to help guide the district. Like all large organizations, there's room for growth, and I am here to talk about a continued area of growth in Power S F. It has impacted our UA membership in a significant way. Some of the ways it is impacting U A S F. One, we're in the eighth month of this year with the same challenges at the school site. We're spending an extraordinary amount of time making corrections for not only UE members, but for ourselves. We have incorrect W twos, which have caused our members to pay anywhere up to nine thousand dollars in penalty for taxes. Insurance is lapsing for our members. We have lack of clarity on what is being reimbursed. When we get money back, we don't know why it's coming back to us. Power Stairs yearly credit is not appropriate, and it's impacting our immediate members who are trying to retire and the future retirees. As I conclude my comments, I would like to say that these challenges are impacting UA members personally with the financial consequences and professionally, as we are negatively impacting impacted as instructional leaders. Empower S F is not allowing us to address the identified equitable needs as well as meet the needs of our most marginalized students. U S F, U A S F hopes that these challenges can be addressed in the near future. And in the face of these challenges, U A S F seeks to continue being a strong partner with S F U S D. And I would like to thank the board and the superintendent for their continued dedication and hard work.
You get, have one more speaker, uh, Chanel Blackwell. Please step to the podium.
Hi, everyone. It's Chanel Blackwell. Um, thank you, board, for allowing me to um, speak. And I just have more, I have concerns about the student outcome agenda, about that has not been um talked about in the meetings. It was promised in November, fifty percent of of discussion of the board member will be the student outcome, and it was supposed to start in January, and it's it's now March, and um, I just, hopefully you guys know about that, refresh your memory about it, so we can get back to this. Because um, I have two, I have two boys, one in middle, one is in middle school and one in high school. And one of the student um, agenda is math literacy, because my 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 youngest, he's bored. Um, he's, he doesn't um, he he done um, the elementary common, uh, the elementary common core does not work for middle school. So now he is bored, and he's stuck, and he only has three years. And what, and I hope that the student outcome for one of those things, they'll be mentioned into the board meeting, which is also
Thank you.
Thank you for being a service for our kids.
That concludes in-person public comment.
Stella?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, first, I I'm a little gobsmacked by these comments that say there's no discussion of outcomes. I'm not sure how you can discuss student outcomes without talking about inputs. The input I called to talk about tonight is Empower S F. We cannot go on like this. And frankly, I feel like the superintendent is shading this far too positively. The district did not report tax information withholdings to the F T B for three quarters. This was discovered by staff, not at the district office, by rank and file. What else is Empower S F failing, or has it failed to do? Luckily for me, I couldn't report my taxes anyway, because I still have multiple pay stubs for a single paycheck, all of which are my W two's in income, and I have not had an answer to this ticket since June twenty twenty-two. At this point, the system is not salvageable. The extent to which the superintendent is claiming that the errors are getting fixed is either and demonstration that he is not aware of what's happening, or is unable and unwilling to deal with the chaos that ten thousand people are going through because of
Thank you, Stella. That is your time. Thank you.
Uh, we're having a little bit of an audio issue for folks who are virtual, where your voice is coming through very faintly. We're going to try to increase the volume in the board chambers, but I guess I would encourage you to speak a little bit louder, if you could, just to help us hear you a little bit clearer. We are able to hear everything, it's just a little bit faint. So if you, if you would, speak a little louder. Thank you.
Sam?
Hi, I'd like to speak in support of Eid. Um, that should be on the
I'm sorry, Sam, that item is on our agenda. Right now, we are taking, oh, oh, I'm sorry, that is, oh, go ahead. Oh, I mean, the sorry, I'm so sorry about that. Go ahead, please.
Um, I was, I was just saying, I I feel like it's really important for it to be put on the calendar. And um, part of the reason is that it, especially for our children to to learn about cultures and and care for our neighbors, we need to learn about what they're doing, and we, their holidays are to be respected. And I just want to say that tests and um, testing and projects should not be due on days when families are fasting. We need to support our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. This is Meredith Dodson with S F Parent Coalition. Thanks for taking my comment. Um, just starting off, I want to say that um, I hear the the caller a couple, a couple of callers ago about um, empower and inputs, and that we can't expect student outcomes without the inputs and paying teachers on time fully, and that we have to fix the empower situation. Um, we also had a promise to the district, students, families, teachers, community a few months ago, that we would spend at least fifty percent of board meeting time on the Vision Values Guards uh, Goals and Guardrails Plan, um, focusing on literacy, math, career and college readiness, attendance, things like that in the plan. And we just want to get an update from the board whenever you can, on when we're going to actually start spending at least fifty percent of the board meeting time on student outcomes discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Rianda?
Apologies, everyone. I was having trouble uh, unmuting. Good evening, Board Commissioners and Superintendent Matthews. I'm sorry, uh, Wayne. I don't know why I keep flipping that up, but Superintendent Wayne, um, I wanted to call tonight in support of the teachers and any staff who are still having payroll issues. Not one person is expected to work without being paid, not one, except for in S F U S D. I don't understand how we continue to expect our teachers to provide a high-quality education when they're not being paid to do so. Would you want to go to work without being paid? Would you continue to go to work without being paid and continue putting your best effort forward when you don't know how you're going to pay your bills or support your families? We have to do better. Our teachers deserve better. They're on the front lines with our kids every day, giving a hundred percent effort while all the while stressing trying to figure out how to meet their basic needs. And that's not fair. This empower system is not working, and it needs to be scrapped now.
Thank you. Dorothy?
Hi, so I have noticed that there is a lack of constant accessibility for some pair families with disabilities. We cannot always see the A S L interpreter and the meeting at the same time. Or if, like my friend who is vision impaired, it may take them longer to fill out a speaker card and make it to the mic in time. I was wondering if there's a way that school board meetings could be more accessible to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. President Bogus, that concludes a virtual public comment for non-agenda items.
All right, thank you so much to everyone who provided public comment. Thank you for keeping your comments to a minute. Um, and with that, we will move to our next item, which is going to be our action items, item K. Um, so just to note, that means that we're going to go to item K one, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar. Uh, and the superintendent will um, prepare, we'll we'll present on that.
Uh, thank you, President Bogus. And as I introduced the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, I'd like to make a few comments on the process and offer um, some potential direction for the board to provide. Uh, our goal is for the district to have an academic calendar that that creates the conditions for students to succeed academically and celebrates the cultural diversity of San Francisco. And setting the academic calendar is an annual process. It takes into account many considerations. These include setting the minimum number of instructional days and minutes, requirements to provide certain days off and holidays pursuant to the ed code, the work and payroll schedules of staff, the need to establish professional development and other training development, um, and the need to provide breaks in the calendar uh, for mental health or other and respite for students, and the observance of holidays in the community. Um, and I, and how we may need to accommodate uh, students and staff uh, and um, publicated whether public agencies are open and need to consider transportation availability for students and all of these factors. Um, the board has asked, and we've presented and um, administrative procedures to revisit our calendar process with the kind of taking a clean slate approach and determining what is best for all our constituents, while what is also legally compliant, and doing so in a way that gives parents and families the information they need. We're bringing forward our calendar tonight, knowing that for many parents, this is, and families, this is too late. Uh, they want to be able to make plans, and so we uh, in our administrative procedures, which are included in this board meeting, we are presenting a process that will allow us to bring a calendar sooner and will allow us to bring a two-year calendar. Um, in the meantime, we brought forward this calendar after negotiating with our labor partners. And when we initially negotiated the And when we initially negotiated the calendar, uh, spring break next year was moved into April. Um, the one, you know, we take into account various factors, as I mentioned, including how we schedule breaks so they have the least impact on our classified staff or hourly because they can only work during that. Uh, they only get paid for the hours they work during that time. Uh, seeing, so we, we negotiated this with our, our labor partners. And then seeing the outcome of the negotiations, we saw that there could be flexibility to move uh, spring break to the second week of April. Um, this is being done in other districts and uh, and so we're going to look, we, we were started looking at whether this would be possible here. Um, and making sure it addresses all of those issues as well as it would mean that students who celebrate the Eid holiday would not have to miss school because for the two thousand twenty-four um, academic, uh, for the two thousand twenty-four year Eid al-Fitr falls under um, uh, the second week of April, which would be a possible week we could have for spring break. And so in an interest to bring the uh, calendar forward in a timely manner, we're presenting the calendar that has been negotiated. But if the board is interested, um, you can do, you can tonight make a motion to approve the calendar and give me the authority to finish this conversation about where spring break lands, make sure that we're addressing uh, all those considerations that I said. And i- and if it can address those considerations and then not have a negative impact on students who are observing the Eid holiday, this is can be moved to the uh, second week of April. And then if the board uh, gives me that authority, I again understand our families and community really are, I need to know the uh, full calendar. So we would be approving when the start date is, which is important to many families. Uh, but then could within uh, as soon as a week be able to finalize these conversations to establish spring break. Uh, again, if the board is interested, looking at that being the second week of April, uh, instead of what's noted tonight, the first week.
Is there a presentation or is that?
That was my
Okay, perfect.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. Uh, I think at this time we will take public comment on this item and we will come back uh, for comments from commissioners after we have both um, in person and virtual public comment. Uh, so I think what we'll do now is we will take a moment and count how many cards we have in person. And I think if we could put the request out for folks to raise their hands to get an idea of what we'll be having virtual for this item.
There are twenty-six in person, President Bogus.
Uh, please raise your hand if, if you care to comment on this item. Each speaker will have one minute. If you could, uh, if you're a virtual participant, a virtual participant, please raise your hand. Seeing five hands raised at this time.
So before we call names for public comment, we did want to try to prioritize students and young people to give public comment first. So if there are SFUSD students, other people who are under who would consider themselves a young person or a youth, and I would agree, uh, we would encourage you. I don't know if I agree. I think we'll encourage you to come to the podium first, uh, and then we'll try to make way for all of our speakers to be able to have the opportunity uh, to provide comment. Um, yeah, if we can start public comment now, we'll be giving everyone a, a minute uh, for public comment to respond. And we'll start with, uh, if there's any youth or young people or students who'd like to, to start us off and then we'll go to everyone else on the cards.
We're gonna call the students up first. You know, you want to go ahead and
Uh, students who'd like to speak on the Eid item, Aisha, other folks, please come up now if you'd like to, if you are a student and like to speak on my Eid item.
And as you come up to speak, we just asked that you share your name so we can match it with the cards that we have so we can track who provided comment.
Hello, my name is Isa and all I want to say is ladies and gentlemen, please give us Eid.
Hi, my name is Aiden Shumajdub and I'm a youth at Galileo High School. I'm also a member of the Arab Victorious Organizing Center. As a child, we spent countless hours reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, preaching one nation under God. What was once saying has to witness leaders creating judges in our communities, choosing to ostracize a marginalized minority group. Thus furthering us away from a diverse community. When you think SFUSD, you think of a community dedicated to enriching students, providing them with a safe space to learn. I'm here to say I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe knowing my religious and cultural rights are being neglected. As a youth in the SFUSD, I have also been told no matter what you have accepted. My really, it's just like the Muslims and Arabs wanting to be accepted. I feel so humanized. The SFUSD needs to take action and show us where the values are real worth and will continue to use it. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Yisra Shwadra. When I first came to Galileo High School, there was no space for Muslim and Arab students until I created the Muslim Girls Student Association. Goals that we have achieved together are getting prayer mats and having a prayer space for all Muslims on campus. Getting classes for next year, meeting twice a week as a community and spreading awareness about Ramadan through our school's weekly broadcast. Gaining recognition through school and feeling a sense of belonging has had a tremendous impact on the Arab slash Muslim students at Galileo. Imagine if Eid was implemented, a time where all students come together, forget about the hate around the world and unite to celebrate. Ever since our first club meeting, we have been planning and fundraising for Eid feast on our Eid holiday. We've worked hard and have raised more than enough for a big meal and plan to donate the rest to those in need. These plans reflect the important values of Eid to everyone, spending time together and giving back. To our, to plan out this feast, sharing ideas of tradition and food has been one of the treasurable experiences in my high school career and has connected me with many people. If Eid is in fact implemented, I will forever be grateful because I will feel like my school district values me and is proud to have me a part of the system. Thank you.
I'm from Tenele Community School. You guys broke your promise and I think you guys should add that. I think you guys should put Eid in our guys chart.
My name is Sergio Hernandez. I go to Araby Wells. Uh, please help my Muslim brothers and sister, please give us Eid.
Hello, everybody. I want to talk about Eid. Uh, you know, everybody, we, uh, we want to make Eid as actual holiday. Uh, because you know, we want to celebrate with our families and friends. Uh, because it's important for us and it's like from our rights. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Basal Hussain and I go to Araby Wells High School and you guys broke your promise.
So I'm gonna announce five at a time. Could you please come up to the podium? Ali Al-Basiari? Krista? Vanessa Southern Reverend. And Reverend Joanna Lawrence Schenk. Thank you.
My name is Adil Basul. I am a commissioner and a city reverend. And I'm also a member of the Bay City Ministries that's over forty-five churches goes across the Bay Area. Coming from women as a premier word. My dream is to see a, a holiday, a Muslim holiday from me growing up. I'm deprived, I'm the, I'm the holiday growing up and I don't want to see these students and these kids deprived. I want you guys to see that you guys passed the law back in August and then you tried your, your vote. So I want you guys to come, to come out and to have the heart and say, we're really back in August. We're saying no matter how much shit you guys have done from the outside. So say she's from, from everything. So I want you guys to be the love of the
Hi, my name is Muftiya Khalil. Um, I'm a San Francisco native. I graduated from Burton two thousand and seven. Um, I'm currently a PA student. And um, it's actually really disheartening that you guys have, we've gotten to this point. You passed the holiday and respecting the Muslim faith to um, uh, to, to recognize the Eid holiday. And the fact that you guys have caved to racist and Islamophobic fear mongering just shows how little respect you have for our community. Um, for decades, decades, Muslims have been villainized. We've been shown to be non-American. Yet this was a step for San Francisco, which you guys have time and time again emphasized inclusivity, equity. This was your time to represent the Muslim community. Like, yes, we see you and we are finally gonna give you what you guys deserve. And then you backtrack. That's mad disrespectful. So recognize it.
Hi, I'm Christopher Taft. I'm an early educator in my fourteen, and thank you for listening. In my fourteen years of teaching preschool in San Francisco, our school, Laurel Hill Nursery School, always strove to include holidays that were important to students and families. It was important in building community, in building belonging, in building respect. More is learned in school than just academics. Children and families learn who is valuable, who is listened to, who is respected. Excluding, so I'm here to advocate for the acknowledgement and celebration of Eid specifically. And uh, as the uh, spring break holiday. Excluding people from this mutual affirmation is how you marginalize and even endanger people. Uh, we've all read Ralph Ellison, Maxine Hung Kingston about how being made invisible means being erased. To be made less than human. So, and it's a strange bit of learning to reverse course and remove you. So I just want to advocate for the explicit uh, announcement of Eid as the holiday, the spring break time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Joanna Lawrence Schenk. I sent you a letter yesterday, school board members and Superintendent Wayne. And I want to read a little bit from that letter. As concerned faith leaders, we are writing to you regarding your decision to officially add both Eid holidays as school holidays in SFUSD's calendar. As faith leaders committed to education, equity, uplifting diverse communities of faith and color and standing against hate and bullying, we stand in solidarity with the Muslim and Arab students who have been organizing tirelessly in recent years, and that's years plural, to have the Eid cultural celebrations recognized as holidays within the school district. We supported last August decision that you made to add the Eid holidays. And now we are very alarmed that you might not approve Eid in the calendar for the coming year. Including Eid is one very important way to honor the cultural diversity of SFUSD families. Just as people celebrate Christmas for both religious and secular region reasons, we affirm the recognition of Eid as a cultural celebration for many people in the San Francisco community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Vanessa Southern. I'm the senior minister at the First Unitarian Universalist Society of San Francisco. And we know as a member of that church, which has a lot of mixed marriages, what it's like to represent and support families who are from diverse backgrounds. I'm also the chair of the Interfaith Council of San Francisco, so I know what it means to do that work on behalf of a city. And our city is an international, interfaith, multicultural city. So we are in the process of needing to step into that. And I really want to applaud this group for including Lunar New Year. I think that was a gorgeous and apropos choice for the school board. I want to applaud this, the students for advocating for Eid, which shows that our schools are actually educating our kids for civic activism. So congratulations to us on that victory. I want to applaud you all for wanting to look more comprehensively at other faith traditions that might need to be represented and and I want to say that Eid needs to be added to the calendar this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the next five speakers, so please step up to the podium. And as a reminder, each speaker has one minute to speak. And again, forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Ahmad Dabashi, Najee Dabashi, Shaheen Sheikh, Aisha Majoub and Jamal Ahmad. Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll call two more. Sarah Hershnaar and Wana Theresa Delo.
Hi, um, I'm Ahmed Dabashi, president of the Yemeni American Association. I approve, I demand that Eid be an Islamic holiday for our youth. So I, I really like for all the commissioners to approve Eid as a holiday for our youth. And we all would appreciate that from San Francisco. And I would like California to approve that as Eid to be a holiday for all Islamic youth and education society. Thank you very much.
Are we go?
Sorry.
Okay. Um, my name is Najee Dabashi. I'm actually a board member with the Yemen American Association. And I didn't come prepared with my speech, but I've heard a lot from everybody and I guess what these young people were saying is enough. They said everything we need to say. So I guess for culturism and for being Yemen American kids or Yemen Americans, I, I think we need to show them that they are a part of this, you know, great nation that they hear. So why not give them and show others that I guess SF could be leaders and uh, adopting or showing that other cities or counties that they will introduce Eid to the, uh, these young people as, you know, recognized holiday. You know, I remember as a kid growing up, we used to tell the school, uh, oh, uh, why we didn't go to school? We were sick. You know why? Because they didn't understand the culture or maybe they didn't know anything about the, uh, you know, Islamic holidays. So I guess now it's good to introduce it. So we would appreciate if you guys would honor that. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick before the next speaker goes, I'm, I'm hearing on Zoom, it's, it's hard for people to, to hear the public speakers and, and the mics are very sensitive. So if you grab them, it's gonna really like muffle the sound. So the best is just to be like about two inches away from it, um, and speak. So just, just so you know, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sohib and I go to Kip SFB Academy. Um, why I'm a Muslim student? You stopped like supporting, like you changed your mind, you changed the promise to make Eid a holiday? Can you get that camera out of my face? So basically make like basically make Eid a holiday because like y'all promised us last time, but now y'all changed your mind. And that's why we're here to like tell you guys to do it more. Because we need Eid to be a holiday because I miss one day of learning at school and having fun with my friends. But instead, I'm like at home with my family instead of like learning at school.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Shaheen Sheikh, which means peace be upon you. I'm a mother to three boys who graduated from, about to graduate last one from Lowell High School. Very proud of these two young people on the board. I'm also a twenty-four year um, city worker, public servant. And I have been, and out of those twenty-four years, nine years I have spent in the basement of City Hall. Likes all of you, putting officials like you on the ballot, maybe Mr. Sanchez remembers. But we really appreciate and I really trusted you. We really trusted you. You say that you respect Women's History Month. Show us that. we really appreciate and I really trusted you. We really trusted you. You say that you respect Women's History Month. Show us that. A little girl from our Muslim girl, color of girl of color played it, took courage to plate Eid resolution. And I hope, I really hope you will keep that trust and put the Eid on the calendar this year, Inshallah. Salaam.
I'm Sarah Kerschner. I'm a Jewish mother and community member, and I'm here in support of the Arab students who are requesting that you honor their holiday. And I want to say that it's so important that all students are reflected by the decisions that you make. And it's particularly important for students and families and communities that are the most marginalized and are targeted. And that includes Arab and Muslim families who are asking that you recognize them and their request. And I'm insisting that you support their request to honor the Eid holiday and move spring break so that they can celebrate both for secular and religious Muslims and Arab families. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Juanateo, a San Francisco native, an alumni to SFUSD and executive director of Five Elements Youth Program. We're here in solidarity tonight with our Arab Muslim and Muslim students and community members in their leadership to institutionalize Eid as a holiday. We deeply respect all of the young people here tonight. Thank you for all of your organizing and advocacy across the district. Their efforts passed this resolution in August of last year and we're highly concerned about the lack of action since passing the resolution. SFUSD has the opportunity and responsibility to stand up to threats fueled by Islamophobia and Islamophobia. And especially to resist right wing pressure. Folks across the country are watching and waiting to see what happens in SFUSD. They will look to this board for its ability to hold a strong anti-racist, anti-Islamophobia position. The demand to recognize Eid is a reflection of the type of school partnerships that truly make our community safe, inclusive, and with the critical anti-racist learning environment that's safe for all children. Thank you.
I'm going to call the next set of speakers. Sharif Sakut, Robert Roth, Anna Noor Nowar. Noor, thank you. Ariel Kay. I'm going to have a couple more you speak before me. Sure.
Eid should be a holiday.
Reason one, kids and families should have fun at Eid.
Reason two, parents should be with their kids.
Reason three, there is no reason to cancel Eid.
Reason four, Eid, just like other holidays, Christmas and Halloween.
Reason five, there's no holidays for us to go to school. There's no reason for us to go to school on Eid.
Good evening, Superintendent Wayne and members of the board. You all know me. My name is Sharif Zakut. I'm with the Resource and Organizing Center, born and raised in San Francisco. And I just want to say, this has been a very deeply disappointing process. And even as I'm speaking, not all of you are even paying attention to our families and communities. I want to say that it's been incredibly, incredibly disappointing to see y'all go heavy-handed with us on process and then completely ignore process when it comes to labor negotiations and then completely ignore process on the state resolution, which itself should have been out of state by now. No one wants it in state. And just to remind you all, not only did you vote for it in August, there was another vote to rescind it and y'all voted not to rescind it. So what's up with our Eid resolution? You also have the ability to do the right thing and make sure that Eid is implemented for the 23, 24 school year. Right now, we need y'all to be champions, not cowards.
Hello, my name is Robert Roth and I've been an educator in the San Francisco Unified School District for 34 years. And I've had four children who all graduated from SFUSD public schools. And one of the things that I've learned in the course of my career as an educator is to listen to our students and to learn from them and to be educated by them. And for me, I've been educated by Arab and Muslim students for years about the importance of Eid, the importance of Ramadan to their families, to their very existence. And this is not just about a holiday. This is about respect for a community. And this community has organized, these young people have spoken out. It's a one-day holiday. They deserve it. It is a part of determining their own destiny and the respect for them as human beings. Please support this holiday.
Hello, my name is Anna. I am a Jewish educator here in the Bay. I'm also an SF resident. I'm here to express my support for the youth that are organizing for frankly, something that shouldn't even need to be organized for. I'm actually shocked. And as an educator, as much as like it, it really like, it makes me proud to see young people organize like this, but it also breaks my heart. These kids should not have to be here. And especially like as a Jewish student, I know what it's like to not have their holidays respected. These kids should not have to be here asking you for the bare minimum, which is literally religious freedom. And like the recognition of their civil rights, right? Like I'm shocked that SF, the SF district is putting Arab Muslim communities through this and families through this. None of them should have to be here year after year begging for this. So you clearly have a choice and the choice is obvious. The right one is obvious. So please stand with these families.
I'm a Jewish community member and I'm here in solidarity with Arab and Muslim families. I am urging you to recognize Eid this year. It is a shame and it is on you that these students are even having to be here tonight. They should be at home. They should be resting. They should be studying, not coming here meeting after meeting for the past three years begging you. It is so basic. It is not that hard. Your choice here is so easy. It is so simple. Do the right thing. Give them something so basic or go down in history as Islamophobic, racist, bigots. That is how easy it is. You cannot call yourself progressive or liberal or anti-racist. If you fail to recognize Eid for this school year, shame, shame.
My name is Damaja Gazali. I go to John O'Connor High School.
My name is Sergio. I go to Audubois.
My name is Damaja Gazali. I go to John O'Connor High School. And for me, high school is really important. And if we can't have Eid as a holiday, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to go to school and I'm going to have a lot of missing assignments. And that goes for all, and that goes for all of us. We really, we really, we really wish that we can have our own holiday and I'll accept it.
I want Eid to be a holiday because it's a special holiday. And I don't think it's fair for all the other religions to have a holiday every year. And Arabic and Muslim people don't. We would really appreciate it if y'all could accept us, if y'all could accept Eid as a holiday.
Okay, I'm calling the next group of speakers. Liz Liebman, Yolanda, Kat Bako, Amin Valley. Nadia Roman, and Violet Vazquez.
My bad. Hi, my name is Hamza and I think it's disrespectful. You guys made a promise and you guys broke it. I couldn't trust you guys when you guys said you was going to present us and our families. I think you guys said, hey, Ben, I feel so horrible. Thank you.
My name is Hamza. I go to John O'Connor and I agree with him.
My name is Yolanda Catalco. I would like to say that I was a teacher for the school district in 2001, 2002, right after 9/11. I had a Spanish class. Students, so mostly more than Latino. They did not want to hear the word Muslim. They did not want to see a Muslim face because of all the propaganda that the government put out right away, which was in fact, in 9/11, a controlled demolition. Those buildings were not bombed by that plane. It was a controlled demolition. Architects have spoken to that. I would like this holiday to be absurd, not only for the Muslim families, but for all the families that students go to school here. Because when you have a holiday, then you have the opposite possibility of having teachers teach that course, letting people know the culture, the heroic sacrificial culture, the Muslim people. So I would like for you as board members to please accept that as a holiday. My name is Yolanda Catalco.
Hi, my name is Liz and I'm a Jewish San Francisco resident. I'm here again in solidarity with Arab and Muslim students and their families. I'm angry that the BOA is not doing its job, which is to protect and advocate for all of our students, not racist adults. As San Franciscans, we have the opportunity to be an example for the rest of the country. As our city becomes more conservative, we need to fight back and address injustice when we see it. The message you are sending to our SF students by not keeping good on your promise is that they don't matter. Why are you sending them that message? The only answer is Islamophobia and racism. Your board sets the precedent for SF schools. If you do not add Eid to the calendar, you are no better than Florida and igniting the violence these communities face on a daily basis, even in SFUSD. For us to strive to eradicate all hate, our allyship and standards cannot be conditional. Please do the right thing and implement Eid. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amin Valley. Thank you all for being here tonight. I am a SF resident for the last year or so. Bay resident for the last year, coming by way of Portland, Oregon, a very homogenized white community population. By way of New Hampshire before that, also a very white and homogenized part of the country. I'm an Arab American. Coming here in the last year, I have been just appalled to learn that Eid is not recognized. It or it has been recognized, but it has not been implemented on our school calendars. These students should not have to be here tonight with their parents, with their families. It is disgusting and horrid. And I'm looking at every single one of the school board members, even those who were for it and are for it. Whether you're here or not tonight, you should be appalled. There was talk of inclusivity tonight and land acknowledgement. But where is the support? There's been pushback on this holiday. And that is disrespectful to these people here and to the students. The students come first. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners and superintendent Wayne. My name is Nadia Roman and I am a San Francisco resident and member of the Muslim community. I'm very sad to say that after months of advocating for the implementation of the Eid resolution, it has really felt as if SFUSD has not acted in good faith with the Muslim community of San Francisco on this issue. As President Bajas acknowledged in the January 24th meeting, harm has been done. I ask you to consider that if you're facing this much press pressure at this moment due to forces motivated by bias and Islamophobia, please consider what students walking the halls of SFUSD every single day move through in their day to day. A 2021 survey found that a majority of Muslim students in California public schools do not feel safe in school due to bullying of their heritage. That's over 50%. The message the community is receiving from the district is that it does not care about what these students are facing. Please officially rescind the stay on the resolution and move spring break to the second week of April as Superintendent Wayne just suggested. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Violeta Vazquez. I'm the youth engagement coordinator with Five Elements Youth Program and SFUSD alum. I'm also first generation in my family to go to college, first generation who's been here over a century, who've excited here in Yalavu as working class. I'm also here in solidarity with my Arab and Muslim brothers and sisters here in San Francisco. I'm here to say shame on all of you for passing a resolution and not following through on your promise to include Eid as an observed holiday. And you all made a commitment and folded under Zionist pressure to find a way to appease their racism at the expense of our Muslim community. San Francisco is seen as a liberal progressive city across the nation. I don't see that when our public representatives and board members don't practice what you have preached during your campaigns for election or implementation of resolutions that you all passed. You all have a duty and a responsibility to represent San Francisco youth and families. I just want to remind you that you have a sign outside that says you keep your promises to youth and families. And I'm here to remind you to continue to do that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the final group here. Mohammed Yasser, Wasim Haj, Hatim Mansori, Yasmin Ode, Serene Arbs, Yish Schwartz. Please come to the podium a minute.
Mr. Steele, could you share how many cards we have left in person for public comment? Is this the last? Thank you.
You can go. My name is Hatim Mansori. I come to you now as a youth advocate. I'm a proud product of the San Francisco Unified School District. Graduated Mission High School 2016. I was even a recipient of the 21st Century Superintendent Award. I was a part of Arab Youth Organization, Muslim Students Association, Black Student Union. So I know the importance of intersectionality, youth advocacy, and how impactful they are. We are a witness of something great today. Past several months, something amazing about all these students here that are gathered, all these people in their community that organize to see a difference in their community. What we've seen from the Black Lives Matter, what we've seen from the Black Lives Matter rallies and movement has trickled down and trickled across many communities. And people have obviously saw how impactful that is and be like, I want to see that for myself. So I say, let's reward our young people for their hard work. Implement Eid like we did for Lunar New Year, eliminate ignorance, encourage inclusion, and most of all, please keep your promise.
My name is Mohammed Yasser. I'm a proud son of Muslim immigrants, a labor union leader and essential worker here in San Francisco. Who take care of the city, working throughout the pandemic, bringing safety to the citizens of San Francisco and respecting everyone. Now it's time for you all to respect me and my family and my religion and my faith. I'm here to defend Muslim families. I'm here to support AROC and all the Muslim families who shouldn't be here, who already go through a lot on the daily basis since 9/11. Today we are here a month and a half away from another Eid without implementing it as a holiday. This time we were so hopeful. We call on the district to move forward with the Eid resolution and include it in the upcoming school year calendar. There is absolutely no reason to delay this three-year-long effort any further. You still have a chance to make good on your promise and make up for your disrespect to the community you serve. Thank you.
Hi, members of the board. My name is Wasim. I'm a case manager and an organizer with AROC. I've been working with these families now for a number of years and I understand what they have to go through. Not only, you know, to get here to the United States, many of our families here, they are our immigrant families. When they get here, the racism, the Islamophobia, the anti-Arab bigotry that this country and its policies have engendered in people. And then they have to come here and have themselves and their children and their way of life and their organizing and labor disrespected. About like an opposition to this Eid resolution. Have you, have you been to that? Are they here? No? Wow, that's crazy. I don't think I've ever heard them come out to speak at any of these. Have we heard in public comment anybody who agrees with the stay on the Eid resolution? No? Wow, they're not here. I kind of wonder what it is behind closed doors that influences your decision-making. Clearly, we can bring people out. Why can't they? If you're so afraid of a lawsuit, you've been informed. The Arab Anti-Discrimination Committee and AROCK have written to you that litigation will ensue if Eid is not implemented in the 2023-2024 school year. You can make a decision.
Hi, y'all. My name's Yish Schwartz. I'm a Jewish community member who has organized for years alongside AROCK, the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. I am yet another community member here tonight, asking you to support San Francisco students, demanding that Eid be integrated as an official holiday in the school calendar, either by moving spring break to include it or by making it an official holiday and including it in the academic year. It's not too late to do what's right here. I beg that you listen to these students who have organized for three whole years in support of getting Eid to be recognized. As someone who organized hard in high school, I know what it takes to pull off this type of organizing, hours and hours on top of school, homework, caring for family members. It would be such a disgrace and a horrible message for you to carry through with the reversal on Eid. Show these students that what they're doing is right. Fighting for the rights of themselves and their community, fighting for justice. Stand by your values of equity and inclusion. It's not too late, y'all. Make the right decision, support these students, and support Eid.
Good evening. My name is Yasmeen and I'm here as a community member with AROCK. I'm here because I'm disappointed in this board's decision to go back on your word to add Eid to the 2023-2022 school calendar in San Francisco, USD. My question to you is, who do you serve? Do you serve the right-wing oligarchs whispering to you behind closed doors? Or do you serve the San Francisco community, who consists of Muslim and Arab students, teachers, and parents? Your empty heads not mean nothing. Your decisions to add things to calendars and to add this Eid holiday to the calendar is what matters. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lada Kishwani. I'm the Executive Director of AROCK, the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. You know, we're sitting here wondering what's taken place. You passed a resolution, you put it on stay. You negotiated with Labor, then last minute you pulled that negotiated calendar and decided that Eid again wasn't going to be included. And now we're wondering, who is it that actually makes decisions in the city of San Francisco? You've all made it clear that you're scared of racist lawsuits. Well, imagine what it means to these students when they're walking around San Francisco. How scared are they going to be when you allow these racists and Islamophobes to run the city? You clearly, you clearly do not care about the 2,500 people who emailed you, the 100 national organizations who sent you a letter, the 30 interfaith leaders who told you what's up, nor the hundreds of people who've shown up time and time again. But you clearly do care about racist lawsuits, which is why we're going to let you know we will sue you if you don't include Eid in the Cummings calendar. But not only that, not only that, guys, you need to know we're not going anywhere. We're going to keep.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sireen Hadib. I am an Arab Christian teacher here in the Bay. I teach special education to 11th and 12th grade. And honestly, I am appalled at what you all are doing to our children. You are sitting here on your computers on art, which, I mean, would not be acceptable in any classroom in the city. You are sitting here with these children at 8:00 PM, not studying, not practicing their reading so that they can be model citizens for the rest of the country. They are sitting here having to school you all on inclusivity. You have agreed to the Eid resolution. You have now reversed. You have put a stay. You've hammed and you've hawed. When is it like done? Three years they've been fighting. Make a choice and decide the right thing.
Hi, I am an English teacher at Galileo High School. My name is Caitlin Hart. I want to echo some of the other educators who have spoken and say that our Arab and Muslim students have so much to teach us. I grew up during the second Bush administration, during the Iraq and Afghanistan wars. And as a young person, I was, and we all were, deeply indoctrinated into a system of unreality that was Islamophobic and that scapegoated the very people who are being crushed by this nation's greed. The media manipulation that we were bombarded with set the stage then for the Syrian and Yemeni conflict, catastrophes, and the unrelenting suffering of Arabs and Muslims across the globe. I learned the truth over time, piece by piece, and it was, but it was only by teaching Arab and Muslim students that I was able to finally begin curing myself of the emotional devastation caused by this messaging. It's so important that we give each other the gift of mutual recognition and truth and that we add Eid to the calendar as part of a healing process for all of us.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Karen Freshman. I'm an SFUSD mom, and I'm here in solidarity with Arab and Muslim community demanding that Eid be officially recognized as an FSUSD holiday. And I'd like to speak directly to the billionaires who try to influence San Francisco politics and our public education system to stop interfering in what affected communities need. Native communities ask that we cover up the George Washington murals. Native, Black Student Union at Lowell asks that we have a lottery-based admissions system. We have Muslim and Arab families demanding Eid as a holiday. When they implemented it in other cities, in New York City, there was no lawsuit. No one tried to contest it. People recognized and honored our different communities and what they need from our school system. So billionaires, stop trying to dictate what San Francisco provides to our students.
President Bogus, that concludes in-person public comment. We also, there's only a minute and a half left of the initial 45 minutes that you allotted.
Okay, thank you for that. We will go to virtual public comment. How many hands do we have?
We currently have 16 hands raised.
Okay, so I think we'll allocate an additional 16 minutes for the folks who are virtual, and then we'll give them a minute apiece and we'll move forward. The 16 just turned to 17. But I think we might have to keep it at 16 for the hands that were raised as we had started. So why don't we start with our public comment?
Okay. So we will have 16 minutes for public comment. Each speaker will have one minute to speak. I will call speakers in groups of five. If we can, can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Thank you. And we are having a little, it sounds muffled, so if you can please try your best to speak a little bit loud so we can, so we can hear your comment coming through. Again, it's a little bit muffled and it sounds low, so if you can please speak up, that would be very helpful. Can we also have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. So I will call the first group. That will be Vanessa, Rianda, Islam, Bernice, and Elliot. Again, Vanessa, Rianda, Islam, Bernice, and Elliot. Vanessa, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Commissioners, I urge you to adopt a school calendar that celebrates and honors diversity in a manner that will not stifle educational outcomes for all of our children. We must find a through line in this solution. When we invest in honoring the ancestry of our communities across our public education system in diverse ways, all children benefit, thus creating stronger community ties. Furthermore, since the school calendar is a very important planning tool and impacts families and it demonstrates its values for diverse communities across the district it serves, it is beholden on you to ensure that the calendar is on the board agenda as a discussion item so that more feedback can happen and be shared and so that a calendar that works for all communities can be implemented. Thank you for the work you're doing. Have a good evening.
Yeah, I'm just doing six. Thank you. Rianda, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Commissioners and Superintendent Wayne. I am Rianda Batiste and I'm calling in tonight again as a mom, asking very, very respectfully to please honor the commitment that was made to the Muslim students and families. The students and families are here every night, and I do appreciate the movement of the agenda items so the families don't have to stay out until nine or 10 o'clock the way they had their previous meetings. But now it's time to truly honor your commitment to each and every student as your mission states. Muslim students may be small in number, but they are showing you that they are large in heart. Please honor your commitment that was already made to them. As adults, that's the one thing that we can do is keep our word to children. If we can't keep our word, then what do we stand on? Absolutely nothing. Let's do better, San Francisco. Let's honor our babies and their families and give them Eid as a holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we are trying. Sorry. Islam.
Hi, everyone. My name is Islam Hassanin. I am here with Arab Resource Organizing Center, AROCK. You've heard from a lot of us tonight, and I have more to say. I was born and raised in San Francisco. I attended schools in the San Francisco Unified School District. I started fasting while I was attending Clarendon High School. I continued this when I went to Hoover and Lincoln. I would have loved to not only have the Eid holidays celebrated, but also learned about. And to see you acknowledge Women's History Month, to see you do a land acknowledgement feels very performative, and this is informative ally. We're asking you to do the right thing. We're asking you to put actions to the words that you have already said you were going to do back in August. This is not just important for Muslim people. It's not just a win for Muslim people. This is actually a win for everyone, non-Muslim people alike, because we're talking about inclusivity. And when one community and one group has equity and the ability to have their experiences not only looked at and validated, everyone benefits from that. So we're asking you to do the right thing. We're asking you to put Eid as a holiday, both holidays. And if you are going to move spring break to try and be inclusive of that, please consult with Muslim communities to make sure that it falls in the actual Eid holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernice.
Hi, my name is Bernice Casey. I'm a parent with two children in SFUSD schools. I think the two previous speakers and all the students that came out said everything much more eloquently than I can. Please be adults. When you say something, please follow through. It's important that you build trust to the communities for whom you have not done that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elliot.
Hi, my name is Elliot Hellman. I'm a former SFUSD parent and employee, and I'm also a San Francisco voter. I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. I'm actively involved in my synagogue here in the city. And I'm asking you to pass the Eid resolution. Now, I've worked for the district for decades, and while the district has lofty goals in the area of elevating student and family voices, I have seen so often that in reality, what drives the decisions is fear of litigation. I implore you to have some what we call chutzpah. Take a stand for what you know is the right thing to do and do what you say.
The Jewish cry. Sorry. That's awesome.
Thank you. Okay, I will call the next group. Shada, Sarah, Allison, Sabine, and Soha. Again, Shada, Sarah, Allison, Sabine, and Soha. Shada.
Hi, my name is Shada Dubai, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Arab Muslim youth community from Wallenberg High School, where the effort for the Eid resolution originally began. SFUSD, going back on their word, is completely unjust. The choice to reverse the decision of the Eid resolution is based on bad legal advice and law. The threats of litigation from those against the resolution are clearly based on xenophobia and Islamophobia. By reversing the decision, the San Francisco Unified School District has given credibility to those who are clearly pursuing an agenda based on hate and bigotry. SFUSD is 2023 like, come on now, this needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah.
Good evening. To not adopt Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha as permanent holidays in the SFUSD calendar only furthers the rhetoric that SFUSD and the city itself is only for a selective group, or selective groups rather. Inclusion, equity, and diversity are principles the city advocates. And as public servants, we expect you all to uphold these values. Backtracking on the decision that was unanimously approved is an embarrassment to the so-called democratic process the board claims it takes. And thus, I ask you, board members, are you going to uphold a decision that was unanimously approved democratically or cave into the racist and xenophobic bullies? This is not just an Arab and Muslim cause, but instead sets the tone for other marginalized communities that should also be recognized and acknowledged. Lastly, this is important, let's make sure those teachers are paid on time all the time. What?
Thank you. Allison.
Good evening. My name is Allison, and I'm a parent at Galileo and part of the San Francisco Education Alliance. And let's not pretend that this is the first time that the district has disrespected our Arab and Muslim families. In my 10 years in SFUSD, I've seen an assistant superintendent laugh at families who were trying to get an Arabic language pathway. AROCK had their MOU blocked for several years. We saw Middle Eastern Studies stripped from the state ethnic studies curriculum. And now you're reversing your decision to add Eid to our calendar. And so if you are really going to serve the whole child, as your new guardrail says, you need to honor the culture and humanity of our Arab and Muslim students. Thank you. you need to honor the culture and humanity of our Arab and Muslim students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabrina.
Yes, hi. Thank you for making the time for me to speak. I'm actually currently at a SFUSD school right now, wrapping up our after-school program. So it's a little disheartening that I have to take the time, and I'm spending my time working with the kids that we're advocating for here at school at 8:00 PM. And as a Muslim who works with SFUSD, you're sending me the message and every Muslim student out there that our humanity doesn't matter, that we're going to continue to be invisible in your eyes, and that we will continue to be neglected because you deliberately chose to rescind a decision after you confirmed and after we celebrated it with full hearts. You're telling us that we don't matter over and over again. And as a district who has made huge progress in getting Lunar New Year and Juneteenth approved through so much advocacy and hard work, I'm curious as to why stop now? Why stop with the Muslim community? That's my question. Why are you choosing to stop with us? Because last time I checked, I think we matter just as anyone else in this community, that we're not invisible and that we should be seen and heard. Because I'm tired of having to stay at this school. Like, I should be there at the meeting, but I'm over here working with SFUSD. I'm over here serving the students that you guys are advocating for.
Thank you, Sabrina. I'm sorry to interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Soha.
Hello, my name is Abdullah Evangelatos, and I would really like it if for you SFUSD school board members to approve Eid. I think we all deserve to have our voices heard, and please approve Eid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be calling the final group. That brings us to our 16 minutes. That will be Betty, Jennifer, Brandy, Zaher, SB, and Kiki. Again, that's Betty, Jennifer, Brandy, Zaher, SB, and Kiki. Betty, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Betty Hunter. I'm a parent of a SFUSD student and not here in my official capacity, and just wanting to say that the board, as well as SFUSD, claims to be equitable, inclusive, wanting to hear families and students' voices and keep students centered. And I think that pushing forward with the Eid holiday and resolution being approved tonight and this year, not next year, is actually more adequate for the students who and the families who are here tonight advocating for this and continue to advocate for this. I think that when the board and SFUSD claims to be all of those things that I stated at the top, and they don't follow through, you're just being performative at this point and not showing students that when you actually stand up to bigger bullies, that things actually change for them and change for the better. And so I think that it's really important that Eid is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
Yes, hi. I am a Jewish San Francisco community member in District Eight. My name is Jennifer Raviv, and I'm calling in solidarity with the Muslim and Arab families to demand that you follow through, as others are, follow through on making Eid an official holiday on the SFUSD calendar. The fact that this Board of Supervisors in this time, in this political climate, in the moment when we most need inclusion and to not be playing games, which is what you're doing, is shocking to me. It's not just a holiday. It is an important holiday, and it is also what you are saying is that Muslim students don't matter. You're literally excluding their, excluding them from the public, from their right to be in their religion and practice. And it emboldens white nationalists and, dare I say, bullying and increases Islamophobia among youth. So I'm really disgusted. I hope that you will keep to your original plan and the agreement that you made to make Eid an official holiday.
Thank you.
Brandy.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Markman. I'm an SFUSD Richmond District parent, a former educator, and a member of the organizing team of the San Francisco Education Alliance. The Education Alliance is an affiliate of R-Revolution, which is the largest grassroots-funded progressive organization in the United States. Organization stands in full solidarity with AROC, UESF, and San Francisco Public Defender Mano Raju, who spoke at the press conference before the board meeting in demanding that Eid be added to the academic calendar and that this be done without further delay. To quote William Gladstone, justice delayed is just denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zaher.
Assalamualaikum. My name is Zaher. I'm a graduate of San Francisco Unified School District 2017 and current public servant. Now, I don't understand why the change of heart. I don't understand. If you're not part of the San Francisco part of North America, as a city, we are in the process of adapting equity in our work to include and serve all our communities, and you have a responsibility to do so. I'm echoing all my brothers and sisters, and I request you to be accountable, to uphold your promise and recognize my community by implementing Ramadan as an official holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
SB.
Hello. Good evening. As a Jewish SF resident, a former student of SFUSD, a member of Teachers for Social Justice, an SFUSD educator, and a frequent listener to your board meetings, first, thank you to the youth and adult organizers for your tremendous labor over so much time to move us towards evermore, towards greater freedom. Please, Lord, please stop testing the perseverance and pulling on the extended labor of a community facing so many other fights in this country. There are plenty of issues that youth can and do organize around towards justice. Please do not put these young people in the position of having to come through again all this next year, which is what will happen unless Eid is actually recognized. Whether or not you move spring break, do not hide behind it to punt this decision to another future. To do so will create more willful harm. Like Cesar Chavez's Observance Day during the current spring break, you have the power to also recognize Eid as a holiday. Please do so. Thank you.
Kiki.
Yes, good evening. I've spoke in public comment about two weeks ago about the increasingly distressing tone of public comment. In that time, I had hoped that President Bojus would have taken some time and some thought and put some guardrails in place and announced them before public comment. That did not happen, unfortunately, because the tone of this evening's public comment has become even more bullying and more threatening. The very people who were claimed to be oppressed have become the bullies themselves, as I said two weeks ago. This is not too different, taking a page from the Trump playbook. When you don't agree with somebody, when you have a slightly different approach to a solution, then you begin calling those people names, calling them racists, calling them, now in this case, Islamophobes. That is not public comment, and that is not free and open discussion, and it's deeply, deeply distressing. There were even some strange comments, like some student who even thought that Halloween was a holiday.
Thank you, Kiki. That is your time. Thank you.
Can we actually have Kiki say her comment again? I wasn't able to hear it, and I'm asking if folks who are in the chamber can be quiet. We're able to hear the public commenters as they speak. We're having some audio issues with our speakers.
Okay, would you like me to start at the beginning? Would you like me to start at the beginning?
Would you like Kiki to start from the beginning?
Everyone of us heard it.
Okay, I could not hear it up here at all, but if commissioners heard the comments, then maybe it's best for us to move forward. We're going to ask folks in the public audience to please stop commenting, or we're going to have to ask you to leave the meeting, please. Thank you so much.
That was the final comment. That brings us to the 16 minutes. We do have hands still raised.
Okay, so that reads as the end of the time we have for public comment. Okay, I think with that, we'll transition to comments from commissioners. I think before we do that, though, I will see if there is a motion and a second to the resolution, and then I think we'll see if there are any amendments or changes that folks want to put forward, and then we'll engage in conversation.
I will make a motion to approve the calendar and direct the superintendent to explore the possibility of moving spring break to the second week of April and make an announcement, should that be feasible as soon as possible. Second.
And discussion from commissioners. Commissioner Fisher.
In the spirit of allyship and collaboration, I would like to point out that we lost a giant in the civil rights movement last week in Judy Hume. She, if you haven't seen the movie Crypt Camp, she's highly featured in that. And she worked across race, disability, LGBTQ status. She's the reason why we have the Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act ADA, right now. And there are so many people who have rights and protections. But in reading about her passing, one quote stood out to me. It was, "Change never happens at the pace we think it should. It happens over years of people joining together, strategizing, sharing, and pulling all the levers they possibly can." Gradually, excruciatingly slowly, things start to happen, and then suddenly, seemingly out of the blue, something will tip. And so I want to thank everyone who's been pulling the levers, all of the allies who've been working together. Thank you to all my colleagues. Thank you to the superintendent. Thank you to members of SFUSD staff who are doing what they can to make our students and our community members feel seen and heard. And thank you to getting us to the point where at least we might have a solution that helps us make some of our community members feel seen and heard because we know that students aren't achieving at our schools when they're not feeling seen and heard. So thank you very much for getting us to this point.
Michelle Alexander. Yeah, I'll just echo some of my colleague's words, and I support Commissioner Weissman Ward's proposal. But not speaking about this calendar, but just to honor some of the underlying issues that have been raised. You know, our student Sarah O'Cheney from Wallenberg High School brought this forward. I look back in my email. I have an email from June 2 of 2021 to the entire board and the superintendent asking, and I had forwarded that. I realized I forwarded that to staff and never got a response. So I mean, just to like, and again, this was the former superintendent, but just to honor the fact, again, that this has been going on for a very long time, that our staff have not responded. I do want to thank Superintendent Wayne for coming in as new as superintendent and then kind of trying to get a handle on this. And I just want to honor also the truth that's been spoken. I think it's important to say, like, the thing that is getting in the way is fear of a racist lawsuit. And I think that is, I think it's just important that that be stated and to say that there's this notion, that the threat of the lawsuit is that this is based on honoring or somehow promoting a particular religion, which is really absurd, in my view. And so I think that this, we, this is about recognizing cultural significance. And like my colleague said, it's about belonging. Students, we heard eloquently from students, but there's also academic research that shows that when you don't feel like you belong, your achievement in school goes down. I mean, that's proven, it's a proven fact. And so this is directly tied to academic achievement. And I think in this moment, it is really important for us to stand up as a board and as a school district, especially given what's happened in Florida. Even in our own city, people are trying to weaken the sanctuary city laws and demonize immigrants for political reasons. And so I think in this context, it's really important. And to be honest, I don't think we're succeeding, but I think, you know, we're making a step in the right direction with this effort. And so I just want to thank the superintendent for that. But I just want to honor, again, all the public comments. I think it's right on target.
Student delegate.
I think first of all, I would really just like to appreciate the community before us today that have come out and taken the time out of their night to bring this issue to light. The resolution introduced months ago regarding recognizing Eid as an official SFUSD holiday is also a recognition of the diversity within our schools. While I understand that there are multiple complexities within the calendaring process and deciding when and how to implement a holiday, I do not think that this should be held against a community here today, asking us to recognize not only their holiday, but them as students and stakeholders of SFUSD. The resolution to recognize Eid has been in the works for a long time. Students, families, staff, and other stakeholders have been working for years to get the Eid resolution in front of SFUSD. Additionally, the Student Advisory Council Student Committee, which dedicates itself to improving school conditions for students and creating a safe and diverse school environment, actually worked on its own resolution to ask SFUSD to recognize Eid as an SFUSD holiday. I feel like this is a testament to the fact that this is a student-driven request. Students and stakeholders are here today for the third time to ask SFUSD to truly uplift the diversity within their schools, and I hope we listen to them. I stand behind the community in front of us today and ask that Eid be recognized in the calendar through moving our spring break to the second week of April, as Superintendent Wade suggested. We should grant all students this day off to not only celebrate Eid, but learn about it, too. Thank you.
Student delegate.
I just want to echo everything that was said by student delegate Hanson. And I think as student delegates, while obviously we want to make decisions from a space of empathy and a space of ensuring everyone feels belong, like they belong in our district, we also have to approach policymaking from a good governance perspective and use data to guide our decisions. And the district office created a slate of recommendations for our calendaring process moving forward. And factually speaking, the data that was given to the board doesn't show that making Eid a district-wide holiday would be the most fiscally responsible or organizationally responsible choice for SFUSD. And that's why I want to commend Superintendent Wayne for finding a solution that balances empathy and also balances good governance and also balances ensuring that all our students' best interests in mind by making that creative solution to move spring break as a whole to include Eid without having to make it its own individual holiday. And I also want to clarify, as I feel like I do all the time, that as student delegates, Isabel and I are not privy to legal information. And so when we see things like threats of lawsuits, we're not able to understand how much merit is behind those lawsuits, what the legal counsel is suggesting that the Board of Education as a whole do. And therefore, I think, speaking for myself at least, when I see that lawsuits are threatened, I do worry about it because I don't know how much merit is behind them. And so I worry that if we were to make Eid its own holiday, being the only explicitly religious holiday that would be on the calendar, that could present a lawsuit issue. But simultaneously, I worry about.
Folks could please be quiet and respect the student delegates as they speak.
I worry about the legal repercussions threatened by the AROC and other community organizations. And that's why I once again want to clarify that the student delegates are not able to have the full picture when it comes to legal issues. And therefore, I'd like to think that we're not as much influenced by legal threats. But I do support the superintendent and Commissioner Weissman or Vice President Reisman Ward's rather's proposal.
Thank you, student delegate. Are there any other comments from commissioners? I'll comment before we vote. Yeah, I would, I would say that.
Yeah, I would, I would say that as board president, definitely want to take responsibility for the moment that we're in right now, realizing that when the board chambers are full of people who aren't smiling at you, holding up signs, right? It's a representation of a failure in the process and the system, both with recognizing communities and lifting up their needs and making sure people feel seen and heard and respected, as well as having clear processes of how we go about doing things and ensuring that we're doing things in the best way possible. And so for that, I apologize for folks for that and recognize that that's an area that we have to grow as a district. For a very long time, we have had a commitment to equity and inclusiveness that has seemed to only be paper-deep and not reflective in our classrooms and the lives and experience of our students and the families in our district. And so I think, you know, I want to acknowledge that. Also, want to acknowledge that we are limited in the amount of discussion and discourse that we can have in the board chambers. It's really set up as a process for us to hear and to speak out, but to not to engage in dialogue and conversation. And I really feel that one of the big challenges that we've had is we haven't had enough conversation, discussion about what's going on in the district, how we're making our decisions, our rationale, and how we go about it. And it's led to a lot of mistrusts and a lot of broken promises. And the board even reneging on things that we committed to, right? And that's why a lot of people are here today. I think, I think it's helpful also to note that the amendment, I guess, for clarity, to the superintendent is calling for a shift in spring break, but it is not actually lifting the stay on the resolution and doesn't change kind of the official recognition of holidays within the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and so I think just to be transparent with folks about the decision that we're making today and the decisions that we aren't making today, just speaking for me, like personally, as a person and as a commissioner, just feeling uncomfortable about where we're at with the resolution and with the stay and how it feels inconsistent with what, at least I've been saying as far as the legal concerns about the way the resolution was written. And so I definitely want to acknowledge the lack of consistency that that might show for folks, also the lack of consistency that folks might feel from what happened with the Juneteenth holiday that the district implemented, I want to say weeks before the Eid resolution came forth for the first time. And the amount of time it kind of took for it to get to the board's level and the board's attention. So I just want to acknowledge that and also make a commitment to be in conversation with community. I mean, to be accountable, and if people need to yell at me or have harsh conversations, to be available for that as we work through this and we try to find a solution. I would just say, since I've been on the board, one of the big shifts that we have done is that we have said that it makes our district better when our educational experts are the ones who are making decisions and leading the process versus elected officials. And I think that's something that we truly believe. But I think we also recognize that that doesn't do anything to acknowledge or to deal with the harm that people have felt in community. And that's something that's still missing and absent from what we've done as a district. And so I think just to be transparent with folks about that and not to seem as if we are trying to run away from something. For me personally, trying to figure out the best way for us to handle this and move this forward. And definitely, if you feel unsatisfied when you leave here today, encourage you to continue to send me emails. Let me know how you feel and what you want to see me do. Definitely want to make myself available as well to continue in conversation with folks, but just being, I think, transparent about where we are and what this decision is and what the decision isn't that we're making tonight, just to be clear with folks. And that is my comment. I don't know if there's any other comments from commissioners, but if not, we'll go to a roll call vote.
I just want to be clear. I know that there's no resolution before us for approving the calendar as is. We're not amending it. We're giving the superintendent direction to change. Right, but we're not, we're approving the actual calendar that's on here right now.
Can you respond and confirm?
Yes, so what I, the board is approving the calendar and giving me direction to be able to move spring break for a week upon completing all the necessary discussions.
Great. Thank you for the clarity. Okay, we'll call vote. Student delegate Hanson.
Yes.
Student delegate Konostha.
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamidi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Seven eyes passes.
Thank you so much, and we will go to our next item.
We're gonna ask folks in the public to quiet down, or else we will recess for five minutes. We're gonna go into a five-minute recess. Thank you very much.
And with that, we will proceed with our next agenda item. To update folks, we are still on agenda item K, which we moved out of order to come directly after public comment. Can I get a motion and a second on the approval of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan pursuant to California Education Code, Section 46120? Is there a motion to second?
So moved.
Second. All right, and with that, I will call on the superintendent to introduce their designated to read the recommendation into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner, President Bogus. And this is an item that we received, we're receiving Extended Learning Opportunity Program funds. And as part of receiving the funds, we are required to present the plan to the board for approval. I do want to acknowledge and appreciate the comments that are made about the time in our meetings and our focus on student outcomes. And while this is a plan that's going to help support student outcomes, it's really next board meeting where we'll be having our progress monitoring on student outcomes workshop. So we'll be excited to speak a little bit more about how we're using our time then and the plan for the remainder of the year for board meetings. In the meantime, we do need to share this plan with you. Again, it's a requirement that's presented to the board for approval, and we're very excited about the increased opportunities and access for our students that will result from this Extended Learning Opportunity Program.
So with that, I'll introduce our Head of Student and Family Services, Mellie Lausmit.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne, and good evening, commissioners. And thank you for the opportunity to present the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Plan to you. The recommended action before you is for you to approve the Plan pursuant to California Education Code. And I have a rela-- you can go to the next slide. I have a relatively short presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. Okay, that's the agenda. You can go to the next slide. Can you go to the next slide? Because I feel like this is, is this the one on the board? Well, I'll just go with it. It seems like it's not the one that was on the board agenda. As Dr. Wayne said, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Funds provides the district with the ability to expand our after-school offerings for the first time in probably close to 20 years, which is really incredible. And that this means that we're able to provide this important service to over 10,000 more TK through sixth students across the district. Can you see, I'm just going to check what you are looking at. I apologize for this.
I could share the one that's on Board Docs if you'd like. I have it open.
Yeah, it's fine. Do share what it is. I think, I think what happened was I switched out the other ones, but I didn't get there. So I'm going to go through this quickly so I don't go over my time as there's information that was in the appendix. So I apologize for that. All right, so the program intent is, the intent of the program is that we provide, we offer all TK through sixth-grade students, unduplicated pupils, the opportunity to access comprehensive after-school and summer programming. The California Department of Education defines unduplicated pupils as English-language learners, foster youth, or youth eligible for free and reduced lunch. And a student is only counted once. So the plan before you, you can go to the next slide. The plan before you was based on the requirement that districts cannot opt out of the program and the expectation that we integrate this program plan with our After-School Education and Safety and 21st Grant Programs. So there are three funding sources for expanded learning programs. And these include the new funding that I'm talking about today, the ACES After-School Education and Safety Grant Funds, that's called ACES generally, that's how we call them, and the 21st Century Grant Funds. We have had those two funding sources for about 15, 20 years, and they're ongoing. And then finally, there's the ELOG Grant Funds, which actually are, they're sort of a one-time, they'll be sunsetting in September 2024. And we've been using those funds for our summer programming in 2022, in 2023, and 2024. You go to the next slide. This just gives you a landscape of the services that we are currently serving to over 19,000 students, and we'll be able to add 10,000 more students to this. Go to the next slide. So the ELO program in SFUSD, the way that we approached it is that we are going to continue to fund community-based organizations to both expand the number of seats that we're offering at the schools that have what we call the Excel After-School Program. That's the program funded through ACES and 21st Century Grants and to expand the number of schools in the Excel After-School Program portfolio. And the rationale for this is because we need to fulfill the California Department of Education's expectations on opting into the program, and we need to scale the program quickly using an existing infrastructure, and also because the Excel After-School Programs already meet the California Department of Education's quality standards for expanded learning. Go to the next slide. That just illustrates how many students we'll be being able to add access to. Go to the next slide.
Let's highlight this point, though. I mean, this is, yeah, this is just, the key takeaway from this plan is we can serve up to 10,000 more students and we'll have 12 additional school sites that will become Excel campuses. So that's a very exciting opportunity for our students. And appreciate that this funding is coming in on an ongoing basis.
Just question about the infographic before you move forward. So the people who are turquoise are going to represent the people who are being served and the people who aren't highlighted, how do they relate to this plan? Are they outside of it?
No, I think they're inside of it, and it's just the infographic didn't come through with everybody being highlighted.
Thank you.
I discovered what happened. I learned something about Board Docs today and why this plan is this one. Okay, go to the next one. We'll keep going. I'm sorry. So the program plan template guide is, this is what is required by California Department of Education. So the plan before you, which is the correct plan, follows this template guide. And you can see on the right side, the column, those are the Expanded Learning Quality Standards that CDE requires. So the program template follows all of those. And it basically tells you how, as a district, we'll be implementing the program plan. And what we're implementing is the way that the Excel After-School Programs currently are implementing those standards. Go to the next slide. This, all of that, I'm not going to share this in this presentation. It's actually what we would call the appendix, and it gives you a lot more information about the Excel Quality Action Plan and the different components of the Excel After-School Program. So all of the slides, imagine you have a slide that says appendix, and this is the additional information, and that will conclude my presentation so I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that. Before we go to see if we have public comment, is there a motion and a second from commissioners?
It's already been moved.
Oh, y'all are so efficient. I apologize. Okay, let us go to general. I mean, let's go to public comment on this item. Are there cards?
Nope, not for this item, President Bogus.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the approval of the Extended Learning Opportunities Plan. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Thank you. Seeing one hand raised. Meredith.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. This is awesome and really glad to see the presentation and that 10,000 more seats will be opened up. And I just, I think that, and I'm not sure if this is correct or not, but I believe that this funding from the state and federal government for this grant is only through 2024. I don't know if that's correct or not, but just if you could speak to the future of this program and if there will be budget allocation to continuing the program past that initial state and federal funding for those 10,000 seats, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall.
Thank you so much. I joined the other speaker. I'm very excited to hear that 10,000 more SFUSD students, particularly in the need area, will be able to have after-school learning and summer school learning. I am hoping that the curriculum will include digestive academics and hopefully test prep, but also some exciting things to encourage the students in music and art. but also some exciting things to encourage the students in music and art to further enhance their learning. So I'm very, very excited, and I know parents will be happy too. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes, thank you. Michelle Jacques here, Director of Policy and Learning with Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco. Want to also just appreciate this opportunity to increase the number of students that will be served by the Excel Programs. We do have some questions. Just want to make sure. We know there are some restrictions around attendance in Excel Programs and want to make sure that the students who really need this and will benefit the most from this are going to be able to access it. Also want to understand more about what commitments will be made for the sustainability of the program. And we'd just like to make a request of presenters that they reference their slide numbers. It will help our disabled community be able to more easily follow along presentations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes that concludes virtual public comment for this item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, soon, Alex.
Um, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification about for the new expanded learning sites. If they already have an existing childcare program or after-school program, how will that work in conjunction with the existing programs?
Thank you, Commissioner. That was a good question. You're referring to the 12 additional sites. So most of those sites have what we call fee-based programs, private programs. And generally, we'll have a memorandum of understanding with that site. So we're reaching out to each of them to basically core integrate the two programs. The good thing is of the 12 sites, 10 of those sites already have agencies that operate the Excel After-School Programs. So that will make the transition relatively easy. And then the other two do not. And so we're working with those agencies closely to see whether they want to provide the comprehensive services or however their agency feels that they can. So we're lucky there's only two that will need real handholding. Thank you for the question.
Additional questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Thomas.
Um, I also have the same question about the timeline for funding. So if you wouldn't mind answering that. And then also just the, what the communications plan is to families? Because a lot of questions I hear from from families, especially elementary school and middle school, is what before and after care is available? So do we keep, what's the communications plan? And do we keep a master list of not just our Excel Programs, but what programs, what after-school after-care opportunities are available to students across sites?
Sure. Thank you for those questions. They're, they are excellent. On slide five, you could go to that. So the funding for the ELO program, that's why it's really exciting. It's actually an import, a portion minute, meant, sorry, probably saying that wrong, of approximately 28 million per year. So it's ongoing. That is why we're planning the expansion, since it's not funding that will go away. It's similar to our ACES funding, which continues on a three-year renewable process. The amount we receive is based on our unduplicated pupil count. So maybe the amount, the amount may fluctuate based on how many students we have. But it should be pretty consistent, which is why we feel confident that we can sort of plan for this expansion. In terms of what you asked about communication to families, the ELOP program specifically says that we have to reach out to families that can access this funding, and they have to opt out of the program. So we're setting up a system where schools will know all of the families that have to be reached out to and that we are working with the CBO partners to identify how we opt out of that program. We have what is called, we have a online sort of attendance system for the enrollment for the Excel After-School Program. So it's all organized through that. So and we'll be working directly with principals because they're the best. A lot of them have, they'll do it through whatever they have, ParentSquare or Autodiler, things like that. So it's nice that we know who we need to reach out to, so we can be sure we're reaching out to them. And so that's one way. Second, your other question was, do we have a list? So EPC, as part of the enrollment guide, does have a list for each school of what the after, before, after-school care is provided with the name of the agency and and information to contact.
Okay, but just to clarify, like as far as a master list. So do, I mean, this is a question I get repeatedly and also affects our enrollment because families don't know where to go to get information. Do we, do we just have a generalized list where we track? How, what after-care or before-care is available? And what cost? And I know this is a little bit of a field, a field, but this is a consistent question that comes up. And I'm glad to hear the EPC has links available. But is there a way that we can communicate clearly as part of our enrollment practices or on a centralized space?
So that's a good question. So we have multiple types of after-school programs, and we don't have a centralized office in the district that coordinates all of them. So we have the Excel After-School Program, which is in about 89 schools, and now we'll be expanding. And we have our early ed department OST out-of-school time programs. And then we have fee-based programs that are through MOUs. So for Excel, yes, I have a comp, you know, because that's a division, something that's in my division, we have that list. I think that early ed probably has a list, but no, do we have a comprehensive list across all of the district? We don't have that.
Hi, Superintendent. Do you think, I, I would just like to flag, put a pin. And I would really think a comprehensive list would be handy because I hear regularly people get enrolled in a school they thought they wanted to go to, and then they don't have. They realize, oh, the after-care isn't included, or it's not the hours I thought, or it's way more expensive, or the costs are fluctuating. What they quoted last year is different. So I'm just going to flag this. I know this is an Excel. I am shoehorning some comments into this. But I do want to raise this as an ongoing issue as far as enrollment and retention.
No, I was actually making a note to make a note of that. And I, I, yeah, and it is, we think about our communication of our plans. Let's, what I'd ask, and I think as we're working in this vein, I'd ask Ms. Laugh Smith, let's, let's put together some ideas and in a Board of Ed weekly, share what would be a time, you know, a timeline for when we could, some ideas for how we would communicate this and what would be a timeline for when we could update our communications around that.
Commissioner Lamb and Commissioner Fisher.
Meli, apologies first if I did not submit these questions to you before. But you know, ACES and 21st Century are like my, my home. So I'm curious, it's really exciting about the expansion work. I know that our nonprofit organizations and our community partners have really struggled with the funding because it wasn't fully what is necessary needed in order to implement the programs at whole. So I'm curious if you've been hearing from our CBO partners, for example, our Excel providers. How is their staffing going? And you know, what are some of the challenges? Or do we see that this expansion kind of increase, you know, funding can help alleviate some of the difficulties around staffing at our sites?
I, I think you know really well that staffing has been a challenge for many years for CBOs. And we also have staffing challenges in the district. So in the conversations that we've had with them, I mean, they're feeling relatively confident that they can scale up to the stuff they need. It helps that they have the information ahead of time, and they sort of know the number of students and the number of staff. There is going to be a challenge. This does require a 10 to one ratio for TKK, which previously it was a 20 to one, and it's great to have that 10 to one ratio. But that wasn't named as a huge challenge for CBOs. The funding from ELOP is, the funding for after-school isn't enough for the comprehensive after-school programs, and which is why we also have a combination of fee-based programs with the students who also get the services at no cost to them. ACES and 21st Century reimburses us $10.18 a day per student per day. Right? That's not enough to run an after-school program. The, the ELOP program is actually slightly less, but because we have sort of economies of scale, or at least keeping the same daily rate for the ELOP as the ACES and 21st Century to keep that consistent. Where we try to support the after-school folks is on the facility use side. We don't charge them for fees. We, we try to put money aside for custodial. So we try to offer wraparound services. So most of their funding can come, can go directly to staff salaries. I think Commissioner Fisher may ask me these questions. I'm going to answer it in anticipation. We've also put funds aside to support after-school access to students who may need a paraprofessional or someone to support them accessing the program. That has been a really big challenge. We've worked closely with them. But this has given us an opportunity to like actually be proactive and carve out the dollars for it. So it is part of the projections. So definitely something that we will continue to work with the CBOs on. There's some, we want to also reintroduce, we had a youth worker institute a few years back, pre-pandemic, where we were actually doing sort of first-person hiring with our SFUSD graduates and bringing them through like a six-week summer course, and then having job fairs at the end of it for our after-school programs. So we really want to also bring that back up and use that as really kind of a pipeline to after-school, maybe to teaching, maybe to paraprofessionals. But really, really using the resource, our students, to bring our programs, you know, the richness and vibrancy, and also hopefully get the staffing up. So obviously, that might not happen in the next six months, but as a long-term vision. Thank you.
Before you go, Commissioner Fisher, I want to acknowledge that our student delegates need to transition out. Thank you so much, student delegates.
Thank you for reading my mind and asking the question about paraeducators or answering before I asked it. That is a huge barrier for our students with disabilities to having access to our after-school programs is the support and services they get through the day are not available to them very often in the after-school programs. So thank you for being so inclusive. My youngest, when he was in kindergarten, qualified for an Excel program, but we couldn't end up taking advantage of it. We had to drop him off at school. My husband and I both started work at eight. So he was at a school, so he was at school at 7:30, 7:45. And then the, the program requirements were that we couldn't pick him up before 6 o'clock. And unfortunately, what that meant for him was a 10-hour day at school. And for a five-year-old, I don't know many adults who can put in 10 hours of work a day. And so I just want to make sure that for our families who need the program most, and I appreciate you addressing this in the, the questions, but making sure that the overly restrictive requirements of these grant funders are not preventing access for our families who need it the most. And where we do run into situations like that, we do have workarounds that can help keep families engaged because 10,000 more seats in a school district that serves less than 50,000 kids, I mean, this is a game changer for so many of our families. And this is so, so, so exciting to see this huge expansion. So thank you for the work around it.
I did want to, I would love to know this school because it is really important. And we work with our CBO partners a lot around this is to leverage early release. So the only time a family should not be able to stay in the program if they're, if we're over-enrolled and we have a student who needs to be there five days a week for the entire time. But otherwise, we do have flexibility. So we can talk offline. So just I can know what I might need to reinforce.
We were lucky. It was a school with two programs, so we just moved him into the other program. But he qualified for the free program, and the other one wasn't free.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I have, I think, one final one. I appreciate the plan as it's been prepared, and I think the intention that it has. I think the thing that it like stirred up in my soul a little bit was just like, what does this look like in reality at our school sites? How are we ensuring that there's equity in the way it's being implemented across the district and by our partners who are doing the actual work? What is the effectiveness of our relationship and the way that we're doing it? Don't feel like those are conversations for this planned conversation, but I do feel like that's something that it would be worthwhile for the board to revisit and kind of have deeper conversations about. Because I think there's a lot that goes beyond what the plan is showing that we think want a little bit more clarity and understanding. At least I know I do. And I'll have conversations with the superintendent and board leadership to try to find the appropriate place for that conversation. But I do think that as we have these workshops available to kind of dive into student outcomes, being able to see that the impact that our relationship with our learning partners who provide outside-of-school support, and maybe even some support in schools, are having to support us in reaching our, our goals. And so I guess that's a request that I'll follow up with the superintendent and board leadership about. Thank you so much. Yes, please.
I didn't have it written down, so of course it went in one side of the brain and out the other. But I really, I wanted to really appreciate the, the creative thinking around, you know, the youth counselors and this as a training mechanism too. There is a dearth, there is a, almost a desert. There are very few programs for middle schoolers, after-school programs. We have that, that funky spot for some of our middle schoolers where there aren't enough camp options, but they're not able to, they're not yet able to access all of the acad. What was really helpful for us in our family, the YMCA had their counselor and training programs, right? So all of a sudden, we had a place for our middle schoolers and our younger elementary schools too. So all, it was a pathway for all of our kids. And so if something meant there's the after, the summer school programs that are going to be available as part of this too. I mean, for some of our families with multiple kids at multiple age levels. Just speaking from my own personal experience, that is, the logistics of summer are very daunting. So having that, that continuum is helpful.
Absolutely. And as you may know, as a single parent with four children who were in SFUSD for over 20 years, I know exactly what you're talking about. So thank you.
Okay, and with that, I will call for a roll call vote on this item.
Thank you. On K2, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wes Ben Ward?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you so much for that. We will go to our next item, which is K3 Memorandum of Understanding between UEESF and SFUSD Regarding Paraeducators' Retention Stipends. Can I get a motion and a second from commissioners?
Very excitedly moved.
Very excitedly second.
And I will call on the superintendent or their designated to read the recommendation. I will very excitedly share that this is an agreement that we reached with UE, but it was really working with our city partners to, and our city leaders who recognize the need to support our efforts to recruit and retain educators. And so as we go through the staffing crisis that we're facing in education, particularly, you know, what we see in the paraeducator ranks, we need to do more to ensure that we're retaining our paraeducators and recognizing their hard work. And so Supervisor Safai, he spearheaded a proposal by the Board of Supervisors to include in the budget for this fiscal year a retention bonus for all of our paraeducators. And then, so that was approved in the budget. But then we needed to both figure out implementation as well as reach agreement with UE because ultimately, there needs to be an agreement between the district and the labor and our labor partners to, to be able to process any, any payments to them. And so I, we have here the head of labor, Labor Sam Baz, who could just announce what the retention bonus is. And then our, when we will be implementing this, now that the board, once the board approves us.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. The City of San Francisco, as Dr. Wayne said, Board of Supervisors has allocated $3 million to the San Francisco Unified School District through the Department of Children, Youth, and Their Families to fund a one-time paraeducator retention stipend to all SFUSD paraeducators in active employment status at the time the funds are distributed. The purpose of the stipend is to help SFUSD retain existing paraeducators. And the recommendation is to approve the memorandum of understanding.
And do we know approximately what it is per paraeducator?
Yes. Each paraeducator in active status will receive a one-time stipend of $1,550.
Do we have any questions or comments from the public as we prepare to take public comment of the cards?
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no in-person public comment, but on Zoom, please raise your hand if you care to speak to item K three, the MO between a UEES, excuse me, UEESF and SFUSD for paraeducator retention stipends. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes para aquellos que quieren hacer un comentario público, por favor levanten su mano.
If you want to talk about K three, this project, about the San Francisco community, the workers who are paid for this job, who are paid for this preservation, preservation of the red flag, then you can raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one speaker. Go ahead, Chris.
Hi, this is Chris Klaus, a special education teacher at Washington High School. I'd like to echo the board's very excited announcement with my own very excited appreciation for this stipend for paraeducators. I used to be a para, they do not make enough. And I'd like to urge you not only to approve this, but as you go into contract negotiations with UEESF, be ready to give paras more because we cannot do the job of educating our children, our students without them. Thank you.
Thank you. Another hand just came up. Dorothy Clark?
Hi, I think that that would be wonderful to have. I honestly, just knowing the district how I do, I'll believe it when I see it. I really hope it happens, but I'm not going to hold my breath. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment on the site and President Bogus.
Thank you so much. Are there comments from commissioners, saying Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you. I really appreciate the Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Safai. Sorry. And then Superintendent, were you in on the conversations as well? Or was it a team working with the, the city on this?
You mean team working with UEESF?
No, with the supervisors. Did they just offer it or was there some kind of negotiation with the, with our staff?
From what I understand, because this was developed in last year's budget, they, they put it together as part of their budget and then we've been coordinating with them on, on making it operational.
Okay. So I really appreciate it, but for retention sake, we would probably want a multi-year, at least a multi-year allocation from the city. So I would urge us to keep in conversation with the Board of Supervisors as we go forward because we won't be able to measure retention in one year with a $1,500 stipend. So it's, it's looking good, but I'd love it if we could do more over time.
Seeing no other comment. Oh yeah, please, Commissioner Tom.
Do we know when paraeducators will receive this stipend?
Yes, it is scheduled for the March 22 paycheck.
Roll call vote, Mr. Stu. Thank you. On K three, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lim?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wesben Ward?
And excited, yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
And excited seven eyes.
So just to note that we're gonna be moving K four to actually come after our item E, which is the public hearing. We're gonna actually be continuing right now with item L, the facilities master plan. And with that, I will pass it to the superintendent to, to lead us through that.
Thank you. I, so several months ago, we, we shared our, the facilities assessment that had been completed after examining all of the facility needs at our various sites. And so using that information, the team has been working to develop a facilities master plan that could provide a high-level guide to how we're going to approach using current funding as well as future funding to address the many needs we have in our facility. So I'll turn it over to our head of facilities, Don Coman-Lathan, to share with her team our facilities master plan.
Thank you, commissioners. We've prepared a very brief presentation tonight with the intention of making time for then question and answer organized along each of the core recommendations of the facilities master plan. So please don't hesitate to ask follow-up questions as we are trying to be brief and focused. First, I want to start off, I'm very excited to be here. We've been talking about this for a number of years. The pandemic was a huge interruption to our aspiration to move forward on a facilities master plan. So I'm really excited to be at this important milestone for the district. I really want to start off by acknowledging the work of Karen Sullivan, our executive director of facility and capital planning, as well as the senior Barry, our bond program director, and Sarah Kwar. Our whole team contributed to this, but they really did an amazing effort getting this project off the ground and to the finish line. So next slide, oh, actually, this is the plan. Can I get the slide deck, Johnson? There, sorry. There's a different attachment. It's okay. That's okay. This is like a hundred pages, so I think we want to, we want to do the other one. Yeah. While Justin does that, I'll just narrate a little bit. So the facilities master plan, what, what is a facilities master plan? Why do we have one? Facilities master plan is similar to the city and county of San Francisco's tenure capital plan. It outlines high-level priorities that are supposed to guide all of our funding allocations. And so this allows us to be more transparent about what we're doing and it also allows us to really engage with our own SFUSD community to get feedback on what it is we're doing. Facilities master plan is also required by the state if you want to seek funding from them. So our last plan covered FY10, 2010 to 2019. We were getting going, interrupted by the pandemic and finishing this process now. And it allows us really an organized way to take a data-driven approach and again synthesized objective data with our subjective experience to decide how we want to move forward. Next slide, please. This has been part of a sequence of work that we started a year ago with the facility condition assessment. Now we're in the master plan. We're going to keep getting community feedback between now and April 25th when we come back for adoption. And this also sets the stage for us as we think about a general obligation bond in 2024. If you can go to slide five, Johnson. Okay. Actually, next slide, please. So the, the condition assessment, that is the, the basis of the data that we used for a lot of this report, we conducted across all school sites and even many of the sites where we have tenants. Next slide, please. And the, the real value of this kind of assessment is not perfect, but it does allow for a very consistent apples-to-apples comparison across all of our school sites. And so its focus is from an engineering and architectural perspective. It doesn't tell you if it's attract, or it's from an engineering perspective even more so because it doesn't really weigh in on whether your school is attractive or well-designed, but it does talk about its overall condition and functionality. Is it performing as it was designed? And there's a very clear and easy to understand scoring system called the facility condition index that gives you an indication of where you are, where your building is and your assets are in their useful life. Next slide, please. The, the relief for us was actually as we did this is that actually our excellent and good sites are pretty evenly distributed along with all the other types of sites. And we do see some clustering though around poor sites in the Mission and then of course our administrative buildings on Market Street. But that overall, we've done a good job of spreading our bond funding across the city and, and that has been, I think, a good finding for us. I think the thing that it does point to though is that there are still a number of orange dots and red dots that we are going to need to do address. Next slide, please. So luckily, while we do have some administrative buildings in the deficient category, we don't have any schools that are utterly deficient, but we do have a number of schools that are classified as poor. Next slide, please. We also learned some things that really validated three years of conversation during the pandemic, right? That a lot of our repair costs are, heating, ventilation, air conditioning is out of date and in some cases non-existent. And the cost of that and then also our electrical systems being out of date actually accounts for the lion's share of the costs associated and identified in the facilities master plan. Next slide, please. So these numbers, I think, have been taken a little bit out of context, but we're looking at, when you look at that $1.7 billion number, those are systems that are really have aged out or are aging out in the next five years only. Okay. So it's not even a, everything that you should be repairing over the next 10 years. And then our replacement value is $6 billion. Next slide, please. But when we look at real costs of not just putting it back the way it was, which is what this report focused, you know, the data from this report focuses on, you're looking at pretty staggering cost differences. Modernization, Mission Bay, which is brand new from scratch, everything up to code, $115 million, right? So that's in contrast to our highest value repair number in the report, $26 million. Next slide, please. The next few slides just really are a few visuals we wanted to provide of illustrating what we've been able to do with the bond program and the difference that we're going for between the schools we have and the schools we want, right? We want something that isn't just kind of functional when it was built in 1970, but that supports not only basic classroom functionality, but a supportive learning environment. And whether that is classrooms on this page, next, you can just cycle to the next four slides, Johnson's. Schoolyards, cafeterias, gathering spaces, that we want to create an environment that really serves the whole child and that supports learning and makes sure that children aren't distracted from learning by the condition of their facilities. All right. So if you could go to slide 19. So we attempted to synthesize really all the feedback we've heard from the public at these meetings and other settings, as well as this data into a series of recommendations. And then to take those recommendations around expenditure categories and put some pacing expectations around them. This was an ongoing discussion during the, the pandemic, what was a reasonable pace, right, to tackle some of these ventilation issues. And what I really want to direct the board to is that when we say accelerate, we're trying to identify things that we'd really like to make a meaningful progress, if not complete our core policy objectives associated with those goals in, you know, three years from adoption. We've got steady, modernization is always going to be with us. We are always going to need to invest money to keep our buildings up to date. And then identifying some episodic opportunities and a few things that we're just not ready to commit to. And this is really the core of what we'd like feedback on from the Board of Ed tonight is, do, have we left something out in these priorities and these categories of expenditure that you think we need to explore? Is there something we need to emphasize better? And do you disagree or agree with some of the pacing recommendations? Next slide, please. Great. So we've broken these recommendations into three categories. One is around health and safety. The second is learning environments. And the third is responding to policy directives and mandates that have developed. And these should not come as a surprise to anyone who has really been paying attention to the conversations we've had over the past few years. What I'd like to call out are several of the recommendations that we'd recommend accelerating. And so the first of those is school site security infrastructure. We've talked quite a bit about interior classroom locks, but this also includes public announcement systems, remote access doors, gates and fencing, security cameras. This is important, not just for school site security, but oftentimes for functionality of the school site overall. So the next slide, please. We're also recommending accelerating outdoor learning with additional investment. And that we are in a place where we've heard such overwhelming demand for this set of investments and we do not have funding to meet that demand with our existing funding. But we feel like if we could, and then others funding streams that are upcoming, dedicate more funding towards this, that we could really make some really significant, dramatic before and after renovations of schoolyards to transform the learning environments there. And then the last slide. Two other, one is also, we need to accelerate our pacing or we're actually moving at a steady clip right now on this, but universal transitional kindergarten is a mandate. We are starting to do that work next year. Well, I, I believe 11 classrooms, but we need to land on exactly what our approach is going to be. And that does need to be delivered in the next three years. And then lastly, there have been a number of recent opportunities that have come up that we'd like to explore and we recommend also accelerating the pace at which we've been pursuing affordable housing for educators. So with that, I promised you a brief presentation.
And so this is a discussion item and you'll see, we'll bring it back for approval. We do want to have a facilities master plan that provides us high-level guidance on the record. But so now's the time, and you see that organized around these three major buckets and the subsequent slides go into more detail about each. So now you can decide if you want to just go bucket by bucket or just open it up to discussion. And
Yeah, why don't we start with public comment and we'll go to board discussion. I do think we'll ask commissioners to keep your comments brief, but also to keep them in the buckets and we'll kind of maybe go through the three as we dialogue. Are there any comment cards?
Yes, we have one. Supria?
Hi again, this is Supria. Thanks for taking my comment. I'm just going to make a brief comment of my own and then read what I can from another parent who asked me to comment on her behalf. My first note of my own is that it's hard for me to see how you folks can meaningfully discuss this at almost 10 o'clock at night. It's, this is a major, major topic and it's just really hard to see how you can give this a lot of the time and attention it deserves. The comment from the parent that I wish to read is, she has a number of questions. So for instance, why are certain vital aspects like site safety missing from the FCA, but then facilities is requesting additional bond funds? When they are later in the presentation, mention these as covered by our other funding sources. Another question she has is, why is the facilities master plan a lengthy, dense document full of data? Some flawed and some painting incomplete or accurate pictures, but lacking key ingredients of a plan. For instance, it lacks key milestones and deliverables from bond approval date through proposed tenure period. There are others as well, but I can provide that information later. Thank you.
Karen Pleschman, SFUSD parent. A key priority issue is bathrooms. So my son used to hold it the entire day and wait to come home to use the bathroom at our home because the school facilities were just totally inadequate and it's very distracting to students. When I talk to students about what they'd most like to see change in their schools, many of them talked about bathrooms. It's where a lot of antisocial behaviors happen. And there are ways that school bathrooms can be designed to be really safe from bullying and to be conducive to a positive school culture. So I'd really like us to see having great bathrooms at SFUSD as a priority issue.
That includes in-person public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment on the facilities master plan draft. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor levanta su mano y desea un comentario público. Los comentarios públicos están solamente diseñados para un minuto por persona. Gracias.
If you have any comments or suggestions, please leave them in the comments.
Thank you. Michelle, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Michelle Dujak with Parents for Both Schools of San Francisco again. I'm going to focus my comments on the public engagement piece. I do want to echo some of the stuff that was said previously in terms of like, this is really challenging at a quarter to 10 for this to be this big, big thing to be here at the board meeting. And so my big question is, where, what are the plans for community engagement? When will these be presented to the public at a, at a time of evening and in a way where there can be real engagement? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. H. Kelly?
Hi, my name is Hava. Um, two things. The first is, I'm hoping as this process unfolds that there is, I don't want to say accountability, but certainly progress monitoring and transparency uh, given to the public every step of the way. Um, in particular, in the analysis of what is considered poor, good, et cetera. Um, some, I just have to name it that some mistakes were made in the past. The second thing, which is just important to me personally, as you're looking to modernize, in particular outside play structures, please ensure that they are given access, in particular if there are special day classes at those schools, that there are outside play structures that are accessible for students with disabilities. Whether it's as simple as a lowered basketball hoop would be lovely. And there are some schools with special day classes that have very limited accessibility. So please consider this as you're moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Good evening again, Board Commissioners and Superintendent Matthews. I'm once again calling in as a mom, um, and just with a few questions. So we would, I would like to formally know how are families supposed to engage in the board processes? When the board has time to review and quote-unquote workshop items, but families have to play inspector gadget to even find the board agendas? Also, how can families hold the people accountable if we are consistently getting half of the presentations? Lastly, facilities matters are very important and we are demanding meaningful engagement in the process that this Board of Education has agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Uh, thank you uh, for the public comments. Are there comments or questions from commissioners at this time? We'll start with Commissioner Sanchez.
I want to make sure there's no feedback. Um, thank you for the presentation and all the hard work. Um, on slide three, it goes through kind of the big timeline parts. Uh, facilities condition assessment is completed now, facilities master plan. For April, that'll come back to the board for a vote. And then the community feedback is ongoing, so I'd like to know more about what the community feedback has looked like and what you intended to look like um, prior to getting back to the board. And then I'd like to know, um, when we talk about the actual uh, amount of the twenty-four bond, how we're gonna land on that amount.
Sorry, uh, let me first comment on what our outreach strategy is and and has been, um, which has been very much in progress. We've been um, organizing ourselves since January to engage in meaningful outreach. And what that has meant for us is that we have won, um, essentially at this point canvassed all the school site council contact information that we have and built our own list, which we will, you know, make available free of charge to our colleagues here at the district because that is hard to come by information. Um, and we've invited all of those school site councils to receive a presentation from us as staff on the facilities master plan and to give us feedback. We've also done the same thing with the parent advisory councils and um, have sent out email invitations and are actually meeting this Friday with their liaisons to share with them um, how they can engage. We've also created a virtual self-guided asynchronous workshop in English, Chinese, and Spanish um, that we are also distributing. Again, we've sent it to the Parent Action Coalition, to the PTA, and we're sending that same workshop to all the school site councils as well with the hope of getting as wide uh, distribution as possible. And the asynchronous workshop both kind of gives you the basics of the condition assessment and also opportunities to share the extent to which it's resonating with you. What are the things you love about your site from a facility's perspective that are going well? And then what are your, you know, priorities amongst a core set of choices? Um, so we've actually already gotten some responses on that workshop, but we're really hoping to push that out over the next few weeks and also really hoping to canvas school sites through both parenting organizations and school site um, councils. We've of course posted in the lead bulletin and also family announcement bulletin and Oasis are either this week? This week. This week, also going out with all of that information. Um, so that's our hope. We are taking up everyone who calls us back. We are scheduling something. Um, and our hope is to incorporate that feedback uh, by April twenty-fifth and be able to give you a more detailed update. I can tell you a little bit of what I'm hearing already as well in our um, preliminary conversations. Um, in terms of the twenty-twenty for a bond planning, right now we're basically engaging with our partners um, to just try and get different perspectives and um, feedback on the the timing and sizing. Um, and we're happy to connect back with the board on that more specifically. But at this point, we don't, um, we're still talking about March versus November. We just know it'll be sometime in twenty-twenty-four.
Vice President Waisen Ward?
Thank you. Um, and I know that probably if you look at the attached response Q and A, a lot of us were very excited to to see this document and to um, see the planning that's happening. I I know it's not an easy feat by any means, so just want to show appreciation for you and the team. Um, I had a question. It's uh, slide twenty-two. Um, in terms of the facilities master plan emerging priorities, category, policy directives, um, and the student-based assignment, which is listed as deferred. So I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around how, if we are actively thinking about a new zone-based student assignment for our elementary schools, it would seem that decisions that we made, uh, that we will make about which elementary schools to prioritize, which schools to start um, focusing on maybe more quickly or not as quickly, it seems relevant. I mean, I think that in one of the earlier slides, you you can see that there's definitely in the southeast sector, there seems to be disproportionate, well, maybe disproportionate, well, not more schools perhaps, but also in in um, worse shape. And if we're thinking about the zone-based assignment system that's really focused on equity and giving folks meaningful choice, we would want to make sure that there is, um, that there, there, we don't have a a disparate system in terms of what our school sites look like in each zone. So we wouldn't want all these great, really, uh, you know, getting the best ratings in one particular zone and in another, I know the zones haven't been created yet, but in another zone, having more schools, a disproportionate number that are getting the sort of the more of the poor physical rating. And so I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about how it, how do we defer when these two things are happening at the same time? It seems like there needs, there's some parallel process and I know we can't wait for one to start the other. Like some things gotta go, but wondering about the conversations with with EPC and the other folks leading this.
Absolutely, Commissioner. And um, this is a great question. It's kind of, I think, the most um, probably complex within the plan. And I want to make it also clear that the recommendation to defer is not about the student assignment policy process, but it's around specific capital investments to um, address some of the issues. Here was our, here was our thinking. So I've been in a very um, regular working group that's convened about three years ago that includes facilities, EBC, student portfolio planning, um, and the budget team and also instructional. And we've been mapping out how these different strands of, you know, from everything, from instructional coherence to our financial viability to um, capital planning, um, to make sure that we are making the most of those different work streams and not um, doing, making a decision in one that will impact the other adversely. So there is very close communication. So much so that when we started the condition assessment, what it would mean for student assignment was actually our core question. And so I'm interested to hear your feedback on the map. Um, I have a slightly different takeaway and, but that's the point of tonight's conversation. Um, but one of the first questions was exactly that, like, we didn't have any objective data. And so there was a real question of like, uh, are we clustering um, facilities in ge- by geographic location? Is that the pattern we're gonna see? When I look at the map, the pattern that I see is the mission and like market area that where I see clustering. I see actually for the southeast and western side and northern side of the city overall, pretty equal distribution of green and red dots. So I'm totally open to hearing a different interpretation of that, but that was my takeaway. And I'm also probably my experience over the past two years with Buena Vista Ors Man has made it very much. Um, uh, it has landed on me as a fact. Um, so that was our first question was we needed objective data to say, hey, let's make sure that we don't have a problem with designing zones that might be disproportionately clumping together um, facilities in a way that we wouldn't be able to fix them in time. I feel like we've ruled that out, actually, that that is not as much of a risk. Now, the thing I do want to highlight is that, again, this data is very much from an engineering perspective, not from an aesthetic one, not from a comfort, right? Your school facility might be performing as designed and still not be a school that feels equitable or the same kind of condition or experience as other schools. So that's part of what we're trying to engage parents and families with around is like, how does your school feel? Um, to balance this information about uh, like the engineering worldview behind it. But that was the first question we wanted to rule out. I think the other data set that we haven't talked as much about, but is actually really relevant here is that during the pandemic, we created the district's first ever space inventory where we actually now know all the classrooms, um, building by building, classrooms, cafeteria, gym. And we can, and that's been really instrumental for EPC as they've done classroom capacity or school capacity planning. And um, and and for us as well, um, for a number of different tasks. So we're, we are very closely collaborating and starting to build a picture of a shared, you know, picture of the universe of SFUSD assets. I think the big question for us was, are there places based on also that we might need to expand rapidly? And I think that's part of what you're asking for, but as we looked at this data, we really felt like we have the footprint we need so that this isn't about, the hardest thing to do is to get land in a hurry in San Francisco. And the one that was toughest, we've already done, which was Mission Bay. So from that perspective, we feel like we have the footprint that we need right now. And it's much easier to operate if we choose to in a smaller footprint than to suddenly rapidly try to expand it. So that, that is the, some of the thinking behind why we're saying um, defer. We're not recommending putting five hundred million dollars to just renovate and expand facilities at this point because we actually do have enough of a runway for the duration, you know, for for at least the next five years of this plan and well until we get to student assignment policy to be able to accommodate. Um, to give us the flexibility we need as a district to decide where um, we want to assign students.
Commissioner Alexander? Um, thank you. And so I have two questions. First of all, again, like my colleagues really appreciate all this work and it's great to have it all in one place. Um, following up on Vice President Waisen Ward's question, uh, the, what, does that also take into account the fact that there are some neighborhoods with a lot more kids living in them, but fewer kids attending school now, for example, Bayview and the Excelsior? Um, do you know what I mean?
I think so. I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like the fact that there's eleven, so eleven percent of our students live in Bayview in in zip code nine four one two four, but three percent attend school there right now.
Yeah. I, I mean, we, I'm very familiar with the statistics and the one that I always share with people is fifty percent of our students come from four zip codes. Right? So I'm, I definitely, but we're not looking at a strict neighborhood school policy, right? We're not looking at, here's your three-minute radius from your address, in which case I would have a very different recommendation because we're looking at zones and the distribution of the condition data that I've seen. Um, and again, welcome, not perfect, welcome perspectives. But uh, for me, that feels like, okay, we, it was important that we rule that out as a potential.
But we could, in other words, we could construct zones where uh, the kids who live in nine four one two four could attend school reasonably close to their home with our current facilities.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think we have to think about this over a timeline. It's, it's almost in, right now, from where I sit today, I can't look into a crystal ball and exactly map out how those demographics might change, right? It's so dependent. But I think for me that the main thing I kept coming back to was like, we can, we can make reasonable zones here that make sure that facilities are in, you know, reasonably equivalent shape. I don't know if the superintendent has anything to add on that.
As I can, I have one other question. So my other question, which, which you and I talked about a little bit already, was one thing that, just to more, give more direct feedback on the priorities, was that seemed maybe missing to me or not, uh, maybe I was thinking it ought to be accelerated, was this question around deferred maintenance and kind of the impact of deferred maintenance on maybe also some of those quality of life or kind of how it feels issues that you raised before. And so I'm, yeah, just curious to hear your thinking on that.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And when I was alluding to the early outreach that we've done and the feedback that we're getting, like what's in my email inbox every day, heat, electrical, buildings and grounds, very rationally responding that your building is shorting out because you plugged too many things in, which is a fair logical statement and is also not the way to run a modern institution, right? Um, plumbing, right? These are the basics. And I think, um, and then we came through the storms, roofs, right? There are just years of these, um, these are all capital eligible expenditures. They are totally eligible for capital dollars. This is not restoring or maintaining the useful life of an asset, which is not eligible for capital dollars. And the funding source that we use for that, the three percent deferred maintenance funding, um, continues to shrink. The buying power of it is really eroding. And so I think a big pivot for us, as um, this is a little bit of you write the term paper and then you realize what you should have, you know, your question. And so I think we're at that place of thinking about that one of our biggest pivots and kind of intellectual tasks within the bond program is to think about how to more surgically scope, um, that there's a modern, there's space for a modernization, but there also needs to be ways that we're really targeting some of these core systems independent of disrupting a school site for eighteen months and two years. Because um, these are the things that are really driving, um, these are the things that are frustrating sites to no end. And so, um, and that includes even the outdoor learning program. A lot of the requests that we got from school sites were not build me a fabulous awning and shade structure. They're like, it is so hot out here. The asphalt is a heat sink. And the benches have been broken for a long time. The fencing is unattractive or inadequate. I need lighting, right, to be, so these are all capital eligible expenditures. Um, and I think it's time that we, you know, pay more attention to them. So that's something that we are thinking about, I think, especially as we return to the board in April, how to, how to better articulate what that might look like.
Yeah, so I don't know how my colleagues will feel, but that's something where I would advocate that we could use some acceleration. And so I appreciate your thoughts on that. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you very much for this work and we had to reschedule for last week, so I look forward to discussing this with you more. Um, I, going back to your, some of your, so I appreciate the comments about what, um, you know, the public outreach is gonna look like. I would encourage um, that any school that is yellow or, I mean, or orange on this map, um, maybe hold community sessions there, you know, that would be a good start, right? Those that are closest to the problem are very often also closest to the solution, right? Um, so when the, going back to student assignment, when the student assignment system was proposed back in twenty-eighteen, the joint advisory committees all got together and wrote a response. Um, and uh, that was led by the PAC at the time. And to quote from that, um, regarding facilities, what intentional efforts, this is back in twenty-eighteen, have been made to renovate existing under-enrolled, under-requested schools in Bayview, Hunters Point, for example. To date, only one school has been renovated, George Washington Carver Elementary School. And that was in response to parent and community advocacy that rallied around the Board of Education to add windows and doors to the classroom so students would have an environment conducive to learning. The condition of schools' facilities sends a message to students and families. The sense of belonging and welcome starts here. We want high-quality schools in every neighborhood. Um, so I think that ties in very well with the question, you know, if you build it, they will come. And as we're talking about moving to zones, if we have one highly renovated, beautiful, shiny school in one zone and four that are orange, which school do you think is gonna be over-enrolled, right? Um, so just as we think moving forward. Um, so a- as far as what else we need to be thinking about, I appreciate the modernization. Are we looking at solar power? Are we looking at batteries? Are we looking at any other modernization that could cost a little bit up? Are we looking at batteries? Are we looking at any other modernization that could cost a little bit upfront, but save us a whole lot of money on the backend? And finally, and then I'll stop. From an accessibility standpoint, and one of the, one of the public commenters mentioned this. Some of these pictures in this presentation look amazing to the neurotypical person, and they look absolutely scary to a neurodiverse person. Right? Making sure that um, big, open, wonderful, welcoming spaces are great. Unless you have sensory integration challenges or um, central auditory processing or um, you know, have a a hearing impairment that requires acoustic modifications, right? So when we're looking at building design, making sure that it's from a universal design perspective, not just physical accessibility, but a neurodiverse and non ableist perspective as well, making sure that that's in upfront. And then um, when you talk about sharing the data, I just want to be mindful of FERPA also in making sure that when you're talking about sharing it with us commissioners, right? Not talk about sharing SSC data. You had mentioned that.
No, no, with staff, sorry. Yes. Yeah, no, just with.
Just making sure.
When we want to reach SSCs, it's it's a labor intensive process to figure out how to contact them.
Okay, that was a lot, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Motomoto and Commissioner Bo.
Um, and I agree with the earlier commenters about how it's really too late. So um, I have, I want to say thank you. This is an incredible amount of information in one place. So thank you to staff for doing such um due diligence and and producing this report. What jumps out at me is I can think of modernization projects that this district has excitedly embarked upon and then stumbled on delivery. And so this goes to earlier conversation from Vice President Weissman Ward around what are the staff needs and the coordination needs to deliver on this? Because this is a massive undertaking. And I realize that yes, facilities is a lead department in doing this work, but it's in response to um, our student needs and our staff needs to have good learning environments. And I'm in particular, you know, we've talked about enrollment, we've talked about buildings and ground, we've, there's just curriculum and instruction. We have these goals that we've adopted that want to push literacy and math and career and college readiness. And um, it's, I don't see this as a facilities plan. I see, I see this as part of an update to the district. And so my question for you is how how we're, what do you need for us to move this as a district to really deliver on the vision? Um, and then I have a couple like, like loose end questions that are smaller.
Do you want to give me the loose end questions, actually? And then we can go through the small ones and I'll circle back because that's a really great, pretty meta question.
Question, um, and I, and I submitted it was around the SFPUC master contract.
Oh, yeah.
To go to your outdoor learning, lack of money, like that's something that has been impacting several sites. And then, you know, school safety, thank you for your responses. Still a lot of interest from students that I hear from regularly on that. And then I guess, yeah, this is, there's a lot here. One of the things that I observed in our last bond program, and this actually relates to the medic is that we, what I observed of the district was picking smaller, less complicated projects primarily. And really, which meant we're focusing on, you know, elementary schools, a lot of the work or just portions of our larger facilities. And I'd like to, you know, give a shout out to Assembly Member Ting for stepping up and other legislative heroes for delivering so we could actually do the projects we promised. But I would like to see this one be different where we're going to invest in our larger facilities, including our high schools and larger middle schools that were not adequately addressed. And and God, I guess here I go, it's ten, um, page thirty two, like even we, the high, we have five high schools in poor condition in part because they were never, they may have been list, you know, box checked, modernized, but it was like this this footprint, but then everything else was forgotten. And so I would like a real comprehensive look. And again, this goes to student learning. And and our student goals and our and support for our teachers to be able to work in environments that are at at least adequate. So I I see a really heavy lift in front of us and a lot of difficult conversations because we're not going to be able to do everything in here. And then teacher housing, I also am excited about, but we didn't have to talk about that. I'd like to see that move forward, obviously.
So thank you for all those great questions. Let me quickly go through some of the easy to answer ones and then come back to the 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 big picture questions. The SFPUC contract, our legal counsel is currently, you know, engaged. Um, and so, but as soon as they surface again, um, I'm happy to pick that back up um, and focus on the the master contract. We actually are in agreement with the PUC on the big picture. So that's good. We have kind of a a working understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and just really need to iron up those details. But happy to get you a more detailed update on that. In terms of school site safety, we've made enormous progress in the past year. The interior locks are, we have a strategy, those will be the last ten percent of classrooms will be completely taken care of within a year. We're conducting right now an assessment of public announcement systems that will be complete um by the end of March. Um, and that will tell us for the uh, twenty one sites that we had first identified as um, not having a PA system that is either modern um and meets our standard or that has a hundred percent coverage of all outdoor spaces. So that assessment will be done at the end of March. Really excited to share that information with you and our um SFUSD community. So we can also map out what we can afford to do with our existing funding um to make progress on that list. After that, we're going to schedule another set of assessments to track down and analyze our remote access needs. Um, and we feel like we can make some progress on basically they're called Aphone, that's what we call them here, Aphones. Um, and um, and be able to have a plan going this summer, at least to identify, again, what kind of magnitude the size of the issue is. Security cameras, we have them at almost all sites. It's just they're all outdated, like the whole system is outdated and needs to be upgraded. And we don't have funding for that right now. So that's my brief update on school site security. Um, I I want to really echo the point that you made as I look at the data, the middle school and high school issue really jumped out at me. And it really speaks to, I think, an issue um, that is again, uh, that ties to Commissioner Alexander's question about deferred maintenance as well. We've had a very um achievable scoping process for bond projects. Because we are limited to summer construction, right? We have these very short awkward kind of windows to do the bulk of our work. And then the work that we can do during the school year, right? It it's intrusive, even when it, when it's going on alongside the rest of the school year. So we, we've had to, um, the modernization program has been scoped to accomplish goals and also be deliverable within those constraints. This is again, like, it's the most interesting question I think we have to answer over the next few months, and we don't have to answer it for this plan to be adopted. But certainly as we map out more specifics about capital projects and how we might proceed. It's like, what does it mean to make a meaningful impact in a huge campus like Balboa High School? Um, multiple wings. Um, what is, what is the most meaningful impact? Is it to take one wing and try and do it all the way classic modernization style? Or is it to try and do a more surgical approach to some of these key systems? That's a conversation we need to have with sites as well. Um, because when you get into it, the willingness to bear the intrusion of construction is is a real thing. So I just want to highlight that. When you ask like, what are things that you can do to support me in moving um, and our team and moving this work forward? I think the one thing is, I'm just giving us time to talk about it. My biggest challenge is that it wasn't this, I don't think facilities was doing things in secret. I think there was a lack of interest in talking about them out loud over the past um decade. And I see a real pivot in that, which is welcome. And we have to keep those conversations going. Because the second piece is, I really need the board to keep going with the governance process and the governance goals that you've set forward. Because so much of what I'm doing with my team is really intricate, detailed, you move, push one domino there, it has all these unforeseen implications, right? We've gone through that live with BP Buena Vista Horace Man over the past two years. And so we really need to focus on being as aligned as possible about a high level policy vision that we're trying to accomplish so that I can be as flexible and adaptive as we need to be um to try and make that happen. Because we can't make a cookie cutter solution, giving these very tight construction constraints of what it means to deliver a project to school site. Um, that being said, I'm super excited and interested to kind of tackle this intellectual question of like, what is a modernization? And what do we want to do in it? Because I agree with you. I have seen buildings where we were on budget and we ran out of money and like half the hallway was painted, where the bathroom on the first floor was left, uh, very notably, the Burton Gym um subfloor bathroom has been clearly left in a state of what I would consider unacceptable while the rest of the building, you know, there are noticeable improvements. So starting to think about what that means to like have a um, a meaningful impact. Uh, that is also logical, logically makes sense to the, to the users there is, I think, our our big task. Um, and I think that as we look at other things that you can do for us is really just around maintaining kind of, again, the spotlight and the interest and the feedback. Um, so that I'm not making, and as a staff team, we're honestly just not making these decisions accidentally in isolation. Um, the feedback and perspectives are really important, even when they differ. Um, or we have different conclusions. And I look at an opportunity like Mission Bay. And I would say that is a place where we have an opportunity to really make an imprint on the public about the district we can and want to be. And that that's probably one of the the biggest opportunities for coordination and collaboration. And that really requires real bandwidth on the part of our instructional colleagues and a kind of um, you know, being of everything else they have to do, we have to figure out a ways to to allow them to meaningfully meaningfully participate and prepare for programming, um, that kind of asset when it comes online.
I'll go next and we'll go to Commissioner Lamb. I guess for me, just to say, I think that I I feel a little bit unsatisfied by what's presented in the facilities master plan. Definitely appreciate all the work and intention that went into it. I think what I'm struggling to see is at the end of this, all of our schools being where they need to be to support our students to be successful. And I think that's a little bit of what I'm struggling with. I feel that in my history with the district, when we're not able to provide things equally across the district, it creates these gaps and these valleys where certain people figure out ways to consistently get their needs met. And other sites are typically left without things. And we kind of are in a place where we aren't treating the students and staff in our facilities, I think with the dignity and respect that they deserve by having the facilities be at the level and status that we we want them to and that they should be. Um, and I I think what I would have liked to see is something bolder that really presented us the vision and like the idea of 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 us trying to get there and trying to figure out other ways to do it, knowing we don't have enough money to do it. And it seems unlikely we will get all the money to do all the things we have to do. I feel like it's very important for us to really go out there and state the needs. I feel like when I hear from families about the situations at their schools and the facilities and the frustrations. It's hard to know that we're not necessarily planning on fixing everything, but the things that we can. And I guess the slide that I I would lift up that really, I think, represents the air of frustration for me is around the the water quality and the emergency priorities of it. Understanding kind of the the constraints on testing water, but also understanding both kind of our failures historically to ensure students and staff aren't drinking water that is contaminated. As well as the fact that we have sites currently that have been dealing with that issue. It feels odd to kind of have a five year schedule, right, for checking it. Um, when I feel like the confidence in the community is necessarily reflective of like five year gaps and our overall maintenance makes it seem like these things emerge quicker than that. And I think for me, it's really centered around are we able to provide the best at every site for every student all the time? And if like, that's not our goal, that's not what we're trying to do, I feel like that's what we we need to be trying to do and figuring out ways to make that happen. Um, and so that was just a comment. I don't know if we need to respond, but I definitely want to leave space for you in this room to respond if you want. And then we'll go to Commissioner Lamb. We'll go to Commissioner Lamb.
Thank you, and thank you to the team for this um intense plan that we've been eagerly waiting for, um, and been part of this process for many years. Um, I wanted to just before I forget plus one to what Commissioner Alexander raised about um, the deferred maintenance and how does that fit in um, around the modernization? Just being very clear to that. Also want to appreciate um, Commissioner Motomoto for raising the issues around middle school and high schools. Because when we do our site visits, it is the middle and high schools that we hear directly from students or as I'm walking around going, when was the last time any of this was updated? And how does it inspire learning, especially for our older students and secondary? That matters a lot. Um, and as we talk about the new collaborative spaces um for the type of teaching and learning that we are um shifting and and continue to evolve um in those practices. So I wanted to just overall comment, I think the acceleration definitions that staff is recommending is on point. Um, of course, safe and secure schools um needs to be like now. Um, as Dawn knows, um, over the years of how important that is to make sure that happens. The inspiring outdoor learning spaces as well. And I think that's, I just wanted to point out that um, Dawn and I've been participating in an alliance, citywide alliance work that's just igniting, um, it's called Reimagining San Francisco. Um, but I think there's an opportunity there to be with our city partners or community partners to think about um that, you know, how are we transforming those outdoor spaces to be um, as it says, inspiring? But also an access to nature. So beyond, I think, a traditional um, in addition to the good work that's happening around um gardens and, but it's also about how are students connecting to nature, either at their school sites or or nearby um, open parks and green spaces? So just wanted to um, give a shout out to that work that's happening. And since my colleagues haven't said it yet, I really want to name and lift up how important affordable housing is for educators. I really, you know, I was really fortunate to be at the groundbreaking at the Shirley Chisholm Village. And at the same time, as I was sitting there so excited and knowing the intense work um, and partnership that it required between the city, the district, the immense amount of outreach, working with our labor partners. And at the same time, that took a dozen years. That took twelve years. While our partners and our colleagues in the next county over and I recognize things are different in San Francisco, but they got it done in two years. And so if we're serious about our student outcomes work, we know that the recruitment, retention of our educators and our staff is paramount to that success. So that's why um, I want to name how important that is. Um, and then to recognize, we don't have to go at it alone. We focus what we knew best, which are our students and their learning. And how are we bringing in our partners, like city partners and other partners to help do this work with us? Because Dawn and your team, you're all so small and mighty as far as um, the the absolute planning that requires to go into um, afford, you know, affordable housing and educator housing. Because that work in itself is also very complex and requires a lot of capital um and resources. And so lastly, um, just want to comment on the Universal Transitional Kindergarten. Want to learn a bit more about the outreach around transitional kindergarten, because I know and I will be that voice of how or Because I know, and I will be that voice of how are we connecting our zero through five families who traditionally, um, you know, come to our district in a number of ways. Either it's going to be through the expansion of transitional kindergarten. Or we will continue to be a mixed delivery city for our earliest learners. Um, so I'm curious around, um, the outreach that is or will be happening for um, specifically engaging in the TK families.
Michelle, I'm actually going to have to get back to you on that one and connect my colleagues on that particular piece. I've been involved in the space planning and the analysis about the readiness of different facilities to accept TK classrooms. And the impact of those decisions then on, you know, classroom availability for, um, other grades or programs. Um, but I'm happy to get some of that information for you.
And I know it's probably a less known department, but the newest city department, Department of Early Childhood now is, um, the, you know, largest funder of zero through five. And so absolutely really encourage that partnership, just as we have a significant partnership with DCYF. DEC needs to also become like, um, one of the closest collaborators, particularly around universal preschool. Um, and, and transitional kindergarten. So that would be wonderful if there could be, um, some more, um, just collaboration there.
Great. Thank you for that.
Um, uh, I think you missed coming a lot then, and, and thank you for the discussion. Let me do it. I want to do a little summing up because as I said, this was an initial presentation. You'll, you hear there'll be more community outreach and, and then we'll come back. And then you gave some direction and then we'll come back with a, a final version. First, just want to point out just one, one thing, why just one thing I want to add to the discussion. Our, um, our, our two ideas I want to add to the discussion. One is, um, I appreciated the comment, uh, the public comment about the bathrooms. And just doing things that, that really impact the kids. As I've been visiting schools, seeing the impact these kitchens have had and hearing from the kids. I just was, if our board delegate was here, she was just telling me how much of a difference having these kitchens and having the fresh food has made. Um, for our students. That is really encouraging to hear. And so I could imagine bathrooms being one of those areas as well. So, uh, um, that, that might be good to, for us to consider how to incorporate that. The other thing is, you know, there is a, and, uh, there's multiple issues we face with our facilities. I think some of what Commissioner Bogus, you were mentioning and came up in some of the discussions was the fact that we have not, we have not invested in plant operations. So you, when we're going over the budget, you heard, um, me cite the study that the city had, uh, done comparing our general fund expenditures to other districts. And where we under invested was in general administration, payroll, human resources, those areas where we're struggling and plant operations. So those two departments were asking to tell us, what do you need? Um, and, and as opposed to like, where, where are you going to reduce? For those two areas. And then the other thing is, I think there is a little bit of a tension between the, you know, maybe ambitious shift, changes we want to make versus also needing to do the, the basics. So we're going to have to work those through both on the high, the broader level in this plan, as well as when we get to specific projects. Uh, so here's what I heard. Uh, you know, maybe as we're revising the plan and the the, uh, indicators of how quickly the priority and intensity of it, uh, about accelerating deferred maintenance. And so even though it's not the most, uh, um, visible changes, it actually can really improve the quality of the experiences of those on site. Really look at middle school and high school and maybe speak more to what we're doing in those areas. Um, definitely heard support for safety measures and for the outdoor learning. Uh, need to follow up on kinder planning and then some direction or, or guidance to uh, if our community outreach, looking at those yellow and orange schools. Uh, and you know, thinking about the zones and our potential zones and where we need to make investments and talking with those communities. So unless I missed anything. Oh, and then they take you the accessibility question where that's being highlighted in the plan. Anything else I did, I missed? Okay. So we have some work to do and we'll be back with this, uh, in a month and a half.
Thank you so much. I think with that, we'll transition to our next. I'm going to call item F, the advisory committee reports and appointments to save us some moving time, if that's helpful.
Yes.
I'll pass it to the superintendent or delegates.
Um, so we have some vacancies on our citizen bond oversight committee. Um, I'm not sorry, bacon, not vacancy. We have some terms that are ending on our citizen bonds oversight committee. We're recommending to reappoint. We also have some vacancies and, um, we're going to be going out for those vacancies. There's some members who aren't coming back. Uh, appreciate the questions about the process. We believe that having some, uh, you want to have ultimately some, uh, people with staggered terms. So you have some experienced people, the newer people coming on and they replace each other. So that's why this time we're making recommendations for reappointments and knowing with the vacancies, we have opportunities to bring on new people as well. So just at, uh, looking at the time, well, that's the summary. So the recommendation is to reappoint the members who are interested in continuing to serve.
All right. We'll see if there's any public comment on this item. And I'll note to board members that we will be timing our comments as we move forward for the sake of time.
Yes, we do have one, um, in person speaker, uh, Supriya.
Good evening again. Sometimes I think I'll be here till the end of time. Uh, that said, I just wanted to make a general comment. I'm glad to see that, um, you know, there's some folks who are interested in being reappointed and hope to see those vacancies filled soon. Staggered terms seem like a great idea. I do want to express my, um, concern again about the involvement of facilities in the selection of board members. I think it's best for that process to be independent in order to avoid any even implications of the fox guarding the hen house, so to speak. It's critical that the CBAC remain independent. And also I would encourage, um, the district to provide as much support as possible for the members' requests and questions. I, I view these meetings, you know, fairly regularly, and I see a lot of questions being asked by members. And it seems to me that they often are not getting answers to those questions and for them to operate appropriately. And for the district to be going out and asking taxpayers to continue to fund them. It's important that, to fund bonds, it's important that the committee have its work. Thank you.
That concludes in person public comments.
We do have some hands raised for this item.
Seeing three hands, maybe we will give three minutes, a minute apiece for each three persons.
Okay. Uh, each speaker will have one minute to speak on the public hearing. Um, if your hands are raised, can we just have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you.
Michelle. Thank you. Good evening, Michelle Jacques again, Director of Policy and Learning for Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. Um, PPS is very concerned by the lack of transparency in the application and reappointment process for members to the citizen bonds oversight committee or CBAC. Um, California Education Code 15282 established the CBAC membership and added four members to represent the following additional groups. Employee organization, immigrant community, stakeholders for students with disabilities and environmental community. Upon review of the commissioner request for information dated 2/27/23 on this board agenda, additional information was requested about the application and appointment process for the CBAC. However, none was provided. What is the process for ensuring representation for the four groups specifically mentioned in the policy? Was there involvement from the communities identified in the policy to recommend candidates to represent them? The district must do better. Please provide full transparency and please partner with community serving organizations to help ensure meaningful representation on the citizen bond oversight committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha? Natasha? Lawrence?
Uh, first of all, thank you all for staying up so late on this long meeting and having this topic still discussed. Uh, it's very much, um, well, first of all, I'm Lawrence Lee, an alumni of, as, as if you was DK through 12 many years back, and also a current member of the CBAC. Uh, thank you Superintendent Wayne for supporting CBAC and for recommending, uh, reappointment of the current members. I, I gotta tell you, it's, it's a great group, very energetic, very enthusiastic, very involved, good questions, worked well together. And, uh, lots of diversity. And I really want to mention that we're doing good stuff. We would like to have new people and we would love to have where the public come and join, especially in person. Is including commissioners, board of ed commissioners at this time. As we're expecting the billion dollar plus bond that may compete against an affordable housing bond. It's very important that the board of ed commissioners understand deeply, deeply all what's going on with facility spending because the oversight people are citizen volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you so much. Is there comments from commissioners at this point? Seeing no comments from commissioners, is there a motion and a second on the reappointments?
Some of-
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, um, Sanchez, great. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Vice President Waisman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Lady Metalk, Commissioner Matomadi. Thank you, success.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to staff. And with that, we will go to item E, which is our public hearing on the initial proposal from San Francisco Unified School District to the United Educators of San Francisco. And from UESF to San Francisco. Uh, and I believe we have staff presenting. Is that correct, Superintendent?
Um, so no, the, this is, uh, we had presented at the previous board meeting. Um, as an in, information item, the two proposals. And so this is the opportunity where it would public hearing, right? Yeah, yeah. This is, this is the opportunity for the public to make any comments on those proposals. So those proposals have been attached. And so we just opened a public hearing to see if there's any public comments.
And those documents are available via board docs. And so I will now open the public hearing on the initial proposal, um, as we begin the process. Uh, do we have any petitioners to vote? Do we have any public speakers? If so, please let us know.
Yes, we have one. Jeff Lucas.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Lucas. As you may know, I read board docs a lot. Um, I looked at the proposals. I don't see any details in there and I, I not entirely clear on the whole process. Um, I know you sunshine this a couple of weeks ago, and now here's the public hearing. The public's supposed to provide comment. And all there is is an outline. Um, I understand that you guys are going to go negotiate an agreement, bring it back to the board. The board's going to vote to approve it probably, but there's no, there's no substance here for us to, um, provide any comments on. Um, and I, uh, anyway, thank you.
That concludes in person public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to item E, the public hearing. Seeing no hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments from board members? I have, I guess, one point of clarity for maybe the superintendent or the staff presenting. As far as the, the public is concerned, what should they be able to differentiate out from kind of the documents and the process as it's happening now, knowing that the actual negotiations kind of happen, um, in a non-public way?
Thank you, Commissioner. Great question. Um, we, we put in the sunshine document, the articles for sunshining, but we don't put the details because those change throughout the process of negotiation. And there could be things that are added. There could be counters that say a labor partner brings. So we, we make sure to, uh, liberally include the articles that we feel need to be sunshine. Uh, but there are not details to be added yet.
Thank you for that. And for a point of clarity, so if something isn't included in there, that means that you will not be talking about it with labor partners directly to reach a resolution, or is there movement and flexibility around that?
There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, UESF also submitted their sunshine document. And so if there are any articles that are not included in either one of our sunshine documents now, but they come up in negotiations later, we will come back to you all to sunshine, uh, any articles that weren't included that needed to be.
Yeah, I, exactly. And so just to point out that the sunshine requirement is so that the public is aware of what articles will be discussed. Um, and I thought I'd take this opportunity, I think he will confirm all we have said, but to introduce, we have, uh, um, interim general counsel Manuel Martinez from Lozano Smith is, uh, supporting the board. And, um, uh, if, feel free to add anything or just affirm what we, we share.
Thank you very much, and, and I'm very glad to be here. It is exactly what staff and superintendent have said. I think the closest analogy is like closed session, right? So when you go into closed session, the law requires us to give just kind of a generality of what the topics are going to be. But no actual kind of nitty gritty, because that's something that is privileged and confidential. Same thing here. We give the public both sides of the coin of what's to be negotiated. And then the nitty gritty comes back to this body after hopefully some sort of an agreement.
Commissioner Fisher?
So can I ask a clarifying question? And this is just as an example, it is not as a direction in any way, shape or form. I don't, I want to respect my, I want to stay in my lane here. But to follow up on that. So I see the union contract, the current contracts are on the UESF website. So I opened it up and section 18, for example, is professional development. But I do not see that here on the list of what has been sunshine in the certificated contract. So that means we're not considering talking to them about adding. And this is just an example. I swear to God, I'm not trying to direct anything. Um, okay. Um, but at this point, we're not considering adding more professional development to, for our new, um, reading curriculum. For example, our new structured literacy curriculum. Is that fair?
You're correct that article 18 is not sunshine as your example. Um, but that is an example of one of the articles. We could come back and sunshine later.
Thank you.
And seeing no other comment from commissioners, uh, I believe that now would be a good time for us to have a roll call vote on this item.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Waisman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Thank you, success.
Okay. And with that, we will move to item K4. Um, which is San Francisco Unified School District's initial proposal to United Educators of San Francisco. Uh, we held this item so that it would come after the hearing. Uh, can I have a motion in a second on item K4, please?
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, and superintendent, is there a presentation?
No, just once, uh, we sunshine the, uh, two proposals, we only, we, uh, we bring forward for you to accept the district sunshine, the union, uh, the union sunshine is not required for, uh, the board of education to accept. But these, since these are the district's proposals, you accept them. So you're just taking action to accept them.
Perfect. Perfect. Do we have any cards for public comment?
Not in person.
Right. Do we have any virtual public comment?
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this item. Seeing no hands raised.
Okay, is there any comments from commissioners? Seeing no comments, we will call on a roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Waisman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Thank you, success.
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, we will go back uh to our regular agenda order. And we will be resuming with item I. Item H, sorry, uh item H, the consent calendar. So could I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
Not in person.
Okay.
Please raise your hand if you're a virtual participant and you care to speak to the consent ca- um any items on the consent calendar. Seeing no hands raised for this item.
Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
None.
Call for a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Waisman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Success.
Thank you. And with that, we will actually move to item I, which is the consent calendar on retroactive contracts. Uh could I have a motion in a second on this side?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any public comment cards on this?
Done in person.
Our virtual participants, please raise your hand if you care to speak to the consent calendar retroactive uh contracts. Seeing no hands raised for this item.
Thank you for that. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Waisman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Thank you, success.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to J, item J, which is a discussion item. Administrative procedures for the development of school calendar that supports students and reflect our values. And I'm going to call on Dr. Wang to introduce.
So I think at this point of the evening, um I'll just do a brief overview. The uh the board had asked for recommendations about how to proceed in this area and to look at best practices. So we had done that and then brought forward these procedures to engage in a process to adopt a a school calendar. First, a two-year calendar, something we're interested in in adopting, having it be adopted earlier. And then having a process that will allow us to uh determine, you know, any additional days we might add for professional development. Or days of cultural significance or um any other reason that comes out in this process. So uh it's pretty well laid out what the steps we need to take and we're eager to start it. It has an April start. Uh our head of uh interim head of labor here, Sam Bass, is ready to go and we'll uh looking forward to going through this process.
Thank you for that update on report out superintendent. Do we have any cards for public comment on this side?
Done in person.
Do we have any virtual public comment?
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this discussion item. Seeing no hands raised for that item.
Right. Is there any comments or discussion from commissioners? Seeing one, Commissioner Fisher.
Um I'm just curious, we had a lot of community feedback earlier tonight. Just is there a list of the community members that will be engaged throughout the process or?
Uh do you have it up to read the groups we cited?
Or let me. Sorry, yes, I'm pulling that up right now. Uh it definitely includes all the the parent advisory councils, all the. Uh community advisory councils as well as our labor partners.
And we do, let me just see here. Um because we were looking at other districts, including districts that had. Um adopted additional holidays and I think we, following. That guideline. Uh yeah, we said engaging the community, initiating a process, solicit input from diverse voices that include different demographic, culture and religious groups. And then as uh Mr. Bass stated, the some specific groups will highlight as well as. Uh then making sure all those those pieces, those constituencies are represented.
Commissioner Alexander.
I was just going to say thank you for pointing that out.
Thank, I was just gonna um uh not, this is maybe out of my lane. So if it is, just tell me to stop. But I was going to make a suggestion, I guess, which was sort of like that we also engage um school communities. Rather through site councils or what have you. So this isn't just a, you know, because it seems like, especially once we have a draft, it'd be easy to circulate and really. Engage, i- improve our, build our muscles at sort of democratic decision-making throughout the district, which is actually. We have this guardrail around people, ever, I think everyone's impacted by this decision. So it seems like one where we could get impact from from a lot of people.
Thank you for your comments, commissioners. I think that will close out our discussion on this item. Thank you so much to staff for being there to answer our questions. Uh and with that, we will move to item M, which is board member reports. Seeing no reports from board members. We will move to item N, which is informational items on the quarterly report on the Williams complaint. It is posted on the agenda and is available for reference there for folks. Seeing no comment. No public comment cards. And on that, let's see if there's any virtual public comment on item N, the Williams Complaint Quarterly Report.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak on this information item. Seeing no hands raised for this item.
Thank you so much. And with that, I adjourn this meeting at ten fifty four P M. And uh we have a comment from Commissioner Fisher.
Just around the Williams, I I think this has come up over and over again, but. The the way that this is reported to us is the number of complaints that we receive. But the, so I think we're talking about the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law here, as we've discussed over and over and over again. And the intent of the Williams Act is to proactively identify where items are missing. Where these items are missing, not just the complaints that are filed to us. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity. To review this process and make it more robust.
Board leadership will follow up with the superintendent on that and then we'll get back to you. And I think figuring out a way to be more transparent about what this means, what it doesn't mean, so the public knows. And also encouraging the public, if things are not happening the way they're supposed to, please file a complaint. So the district can be on notice to fix it. Uh we don't want you not to complain. We really want to make sure we catch everything as it happens. Okay, and with that, I think we will move from item N to item O. And we will, I adjourn this meeting at ten fifty five P M on March seventh, twenty twenty three.